And there's enough of us here, so we'll call this meeting to order at 12 o'clock. So we'll go through the realities of this. Meeting is being held remote due to the emergency order of the governor. The people who are participating remote from the school committee are Ana Cezic, Michelle Bailey, Peter Walczak, Dana Alara, Michelle Horgan, and Stacy Metternich. Something else I can't remember. Did I say it was being recorded? This meeting is being recorded. Okay, I think that's it. So just to frame this out today. I am not, I have seen several school committees go for hours and hours and hours. So if we go till 2 o'clock, I will definitely be asking for a few minute recess because I don't think it's good for us to all be sitting and talking and sitting and talking. So we like, we can take breather breaks and things like that. You know, if we cannot come to a decision. The way Governor Riley framed it on Tuesday is it's like electing the Pope. You have to stay until the white smoke comes. So settle in, order your dinner, get ready. However, it would be my preference not to have that happen. And we'll just keep checking in with each other as we go through to make sure we're ready. I also want to frame this, this is an extremely difficult decision. There's no right answer and there's no wrong answer. And even the decisions we make today are subject to change as the environment changes, as science brings us new information, as we observe how our plan is working. So everyone should feel comfortable that should there be a problem today that we can still adjust. We have tried our best to provide access to parents for questions. We've had lots of emails from them. I will tell you what you emailed me today. It's late, so didn't read them because we've had lots to do. And most of the people, well, all of us on this committee work. This is a volunteer position. It is unpaid. And we have probably spent more hours on this in the last month than we did on the budget through the course of several months' time. So please bear with us as we try to get through this. It is on the agenda that we will have no more than 20 minutes of public comment. If you feel you have something to say that hasn't already been said. You will get three minutes to speak. At the end of the three minutes, we will mute you and you will be done because we need to move along to our business. So if you would like to speak today, you should go to where it says participant. You should, at the bottom of that screen, see a place where it says raise hand. And you should raise your hand and you will be recognized to speak. Not have anybody, like one minute. Trying to find something. Oh, my iPad.
David is having some trouble getting on.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to.
And participants. I'm going to ask Chanelle to connect with him and see if she can help him out. And Michelle, there is a participant, Martha Hale, who has the hand raised. So I'm going to enable her to. At this moment.
Hi, Martha. I have some good news and bad news for you. It's not going to be an exact three minutes because I don't have my phone here, so.
It's like Michelle Horgan is volunteering to time.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, well, well, I like everybody else is anxious to get to the votes. So I don't want to take up too much time and I'll talk fast here. But I do want to say one thing particularly that I feel like hasn't been said enough and truly can't be said enough. And that is to make sure to say a thank you to this committee, to the teachers, the staff, the administration of our school, our school community. And this incredibly challenging time, the grace that you all have shown to dive into these incredibly challenging, hard, painful discussions and find paths to find things forward that aren't perfect, but that are solutions. And to do it with grace when this not always shown to you all has been really, I feel inspiring. And so I just wanted to say thank you all and also say that we see you. We appreciate you all and we really just think you guys are amazing. And I just, as hard as this is, you have handled it incredibly. So thank you, teachers, staff, everybody involved and all the hours there. And the other thing I wanted to say is that the words equity, inclusivity have been used a lot lately, as they should be, in these kind of conversations. And I just wanted to point out that what we have on the table can't, because of the nature of it, truly be either of those things just because each child, each family has its own challenges. And it's very hard to find the umbrella solution for all of them. But I do want to also say and point out and submit to you all that the way we were quote unquote normally back to school also had those. And so I'm really trying to change the narrative here that maybe this isn't the worst thing that's ever had to education. That maybe truly it is the, not our downfall, but our uprising to come together from this year and years going forward to truly build the educational system that is inclusive, is equitable, and is diverse. That our children, our community, our nation, our, everybody needs. So everybody who's on the phone, what I'm trying to say is please stay involved. Please join the larger conversation. You know, we can do hard things together. And I'm excited to see where this comes from here. With, through the challenges together, building a better future where kids truly learn for what's best for them and where teachers are allowed to teach towards thriving instead of teach towards testing. And that's it. Thank you very much.
So Martha, can you say? So, and this is entirely up to you, how you want to put this out. But we have about 230 people, if you include all of us, online today. Do you want to tell people a good way to get in touch with you if they would like to participate in your, like, back to school thank you?
I would love that. Yes, thank you, Michelle. So I, well, not to spoil, teachers, cover your ears, and administration, everybody. I'm trying to pull together a group of people who are interested in welcoming everybody back to school, be it on digitally or be it in person on the day teachers come back and staff and administration comes back with a large thank you from the community in really exciting ways. So if you want to contact me, my email address is Martha dot, oh no, sorry, that's my work address. But hailferrell@gmail.com. And, you know, or people out there have my phone number. But I would love to have more people involved and really just show our graduates committee, again, I know it's not perfect. I know it's painful. I know this is hard. But I just really all know that deep down, all of us are in here together and really appreciative of everything that's happening.
Great. Thank you. All right. So you can send Martha back to the room. No one else is raising their hand. I know people on the phone, like, there's some code, but. It's not that many of you, so I hope that you can hear and listen to what we're doing today. Okay, so. The order of the agenda is to hear the ventilation report and action steps. I'm going to propose after that, we take a short recess since many documents were not received until those moments before. And then I spent most of the time from the time that received it until now, trying to get it to all of you. So we will probably take a recess after that to give people a time to read it. We'll determine what that amount of time is. And then we will come back, ask any remaining questions you have. After we ask questions, then we'll open it up to sort of a deliberative, controlled conversation. And then move forward with the rest of the agenda. Does that sound like it's going to work for people?
Sounds great.
Okay, so Tom, that puts you in the first slot.
All right, now try to open it up nicely for you all. So thank you, Madam Chair. So attached to the agenda is a folder that I created for not only the school committee, but also district staff and for the general public to be able to view the ventilation report. That was a result of Environmental Health Engineering Incorporated, their site visits and their assessments of our existing ventilation systems. I tasked them with coming through our district and walking through all of our spaces and examining them for any deficiencies. And from that report, which I will share my screen real quick. If I could have the host just enable me the opportunity to share my screen.
You should be all set there, Tom.
Thank you. Right.
And just so people know, this is linked to our agenda. So if you want to be reading along with Tom, you can go to hwschools.net, click on the district calendar, then click on today. And then there's another click here to see this.
Thank you. And we are currently working on some of our communications. So we can try to shorten that down so the public can receive all of this information in less than two to three clicks. So, but thank you for mapping that out for folks. So in the folder, the first thing I'll review really quickly as a visual is the report that came back from EH&amp;E to give people a background. This company typically assesses indoor environmental quality in the healthcare, higher life sciences, and commercial spaces. They're regarded as one of the best in the industry. And that was our goal, was to bring in the very best people to advise us on our, on anything where we need consultation. With that being said, there's a short narrative at the beginning describing the process and also the tie-in to the report from ASHRAI, which is the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, peer group that specializes in ventilation. In the report, the, the most important piece that I'll point people to is the deficiency list that came from site visits and inspections of all of our ventilation equipment. On that list, you have 80-plus deficiencies that I'll scroll through. It's going to be tough to visit point by point because I know that you do have a long agenda. Items shaded in red are in need of immediate correction before occup, before full occupancy for school. Items in yellow, they have some action items. And then there's items that are unshaded that are still need attention. With that being said, I feel personally obligated to correct each and every deficiency listed on here before we bring our students back, and that is the game plan. I've taken this list and I have imported it into a spreadsheet document that I've also shared publicly. So all of our occupants, whether it be staff, students, parents can view this to give you a live time update of where we are on each and every item. I think it's very important for people, for us to be fully transparent with the work that we're undertaking before we bring people back into the school buildings. So I would welcome everybody to kind of tune in, in live time and be able to see this spreadsheet updated as we go. I can say that I'm devoting a lot of my time every day to picking up the phone and calling contractors and our controls experts to be able to compete with every other school district and facility in the area to be able to get onsite services where needed. So not next week, but the following week, we will be having mechanical, I'm sorry, ventilation mechanics from Train Incorporated onsite for a week to be able to address some of the issues with our bigger air handling equipment. We have our DDC, which is Direct Digital Control. That is, those controls are prevalent in the middle school, high school, and Cutler schools. They're able to remote into our systems and make some of the adjustments remotely without having to come onsite. They're going to begin that work at the beginning of next week because we want to make sure that whatever we're able to take care of through programming logic, that's addressed before we bring the mechanics onsite so we can be efficient with their time. In the Bukeur School, part, part of the middle school and the Winthrop School, we have pneumatic controls, which are air controls. It's, it's an antiquated system, yet it still does work. And it worked for decades prior to Direct Digital Control. That's a specialty trade. I have been able to land one of the best technicians in that area, in, in the area. One of the best technicians to be able to commit onsite repair of some of those controls. My confidence level is high that we will be able to address all of the items listed on the deficiency report prior to bringing students back in. And I guess I would open up the opportunity, if anybody has any questions on the methodology behind what we're doing or any of the technical questions, I'll do my best to field.
All right, so Anna has her hand up. Let me just see if I can. I can't, oh, let me go. It still doesn't work here. Oh, it's because we're on share screen. So let me see if I can.
I can, I can stop sharing.
People might have a specific thing. Okay, so so far only Anna has her hand up. So she will go first, then David, then Peter, then Michelle. Okay. I'm going to write down that order.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Tom, my first question sort of has to do with overall budget implications of this. It looks long, but I know that some of these items may not be super expensive. Do you have any idea what this will all cost?
The grand total, I do not. And it would be tough for me to estimate because some of these items are based on a time and material basis. For example, right now, a technician from Train Incorporated, they're billing out at approximately $250 per hour. And that's my intent with trying to get a lot of the control stuff out of the way first. That's typically billed out around, out around $125 an hour. So the more we can fix with the logic and the programming, the least, the less amount that we'll have to spend on the onsite mechanics. I mean, for example, a rough number would be around $10,000 for upgrading all the filters and also providing standalone HEPA filters in our nursing stations, in our, our quote unquote quarantine rooms that we are obligated to provide. So I, I'm sorry that I'm not able to provide you with that accurate figure, but I did believe that, I do believe Vinnie provided the committee with a a large figure of about $100,000. And I don't think that we're near spending that now. I, I think that it will be significantly less. But that's where we are right now. There's nothing on the list that, that I see will require a major investment. A lot of this is repair and maintenance that would be happening anyways in a typical year. You know, minus the filter upgrades.
Okay. Second question is, it was sort of a follow-up to something you said at the Board of Health meeting on Wednesday. And please correct me if I'm misunderstanding the technicality. It sounded as though with the enhanced filters, that the MERV 13 filters, which are fundamentally denser filter, you made a comment at the Board of Health that that would be difficult to maintain adequate airflow during the heating season. And I got the impression from that, that it works potentially in a satisfactory way with the windows open. But once you have to close the windows, that might make it harder. Could you expand a little? I think the word you used was it will be a challenge. And I'm wondering if you could unpack for me, how does this, assuming the repairs get made, then can you address the functionality of our system to meet COVID standards in both the fall and the spring, when the windows might be open, but also in the winter, when the windows might be closed? Could you help me understand?
I can. And I, I think I understand your question. So the filters are, I'm going to take this in two different categories. So the, the filter, upgrading the filters may require our staff to change the filters more frequently because with a denser material, you're going to trap more contaminants from the air. When it comes to increasing the outside air intake, so if we're during the non-heating season, it's perfectly safe to bring in 100% outside air in a space that's not air-conditioned. As we get into the colder months, and I'm going to use January, for example, if it's, it's not, it's not feasible to bring in 100% outside air if the temperature is below freezing because then you're just bringing frigid air across a heating coil. And A, you're not going to be able to effectively heat the space by opening up the dampers to 100%, but you're also putting the plumbing systems at risk and have a possible freeze-up. So we can start the year off at 100%. That's, that is like the best practice when you're not heating anyways, is to bring in 100% outside air. It's just that we're going to have to, through trial and error, find that magic percentage during the heating season. In our high school and Cutler schools that have Direct Digital Control, that's a logic that you can set up where if the temperature is X, then you can program the dampers to be Y. In the schools that have the legacy equipment, the legacy pneumatic equipment, a lot of that takes manual adjustment. So that will be a challenge and, you know, we're up for the challenge.
Can you define challenge? Because when I hear the word challenge, that sounds, I mean, that kind of sounds like coded speak for not possible, but I don't want to make that assumption. Can you under, can you define challenge?
If it was not possible, I would tell you that it was not possible. So it would, it's just more labor-intensive. So finding that magic number in those buildings that don't have the Direct Digital monitoring and the programming logic behind it requires a lot of manual, hands-on activities.
I'm very grateful at this moment that I work in a museum industry that deals with, to the, you know, micron temperature and humidity adjustment for protecting artwork. So I feel like I have a good, I think I have a good technical understanding in some of this. This is the last question, and it's more thinking broadly because our purview as a school committee is not limited to this moment. This moment will pass and our buildings will remain. How much of this is a byproduct of preventive maintenance that was not happening, if any? I'm looking at the long-term of this and wondering, you know, our buildings are old. They have ongoing maintenance. In your professional opinion, is there anything that we could have been doing or perhaps need to do differently in the future to avoid this kind of financial input? Because from a fiduciary standpoint, I don't like the idea of being reactive to fixing things when they break. I'd rather get ahead of this curve long-term. So in a way, this list is helpful because it gives you a sense of some of the issues. But how do you see us moving through this moment of crisis from sort of a facility standpoint, so we're not in the same place again? You know, two years to now, three years to now. How do we prevent this from happening?
Well, I, I think if that, if there was no preventive maintenance, then this list would probably be four to five times longer, right? So I think the fact that this list is capped at the 80-some-odd items and then you subtract out different adjustments. I, I feel that this would be, some of the mechanical issues would be typical to any school year. You know, moving forward and thinking big picture and long-term, Direct Digital Control for HVAC is the standard that we would want to move towards. And that is the standard that, you know, buildings are built at now and have been built in, you know, for the past two to three decades, right? So some of our control systems and, you know, actual devices, whether it be unit ventilators or rooftop units, yeah, the, the honest answer is that we are in need of some facility upgrades. And that is one of the reasons why we took the three elementary schools and filed statements, statements of interest with the MSBA to try to get into their capital pipeline to make some of these improvements, whether that's through full renovation or addition or new construction. But yes, our infrastructure is aging. The fact that, you know, our devices are still running for the most part, you know, to their design intent, is a testament that the district has invested in preventive maintenance. But you can only, you know, drive that Ford Pinto so far, right?
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Hey, Tom, I just wanted to actually thank you for this list. This thing, this is pretty fantastic, even though it is, you know, long and sort of negative to look at it. I don't really just sort of ask kind of what I was looking for. The, the, the other thing I was really thinking is, you know, how often are we replacing these things? Like, I'm looking at stuff like wrong size filters and some of the things and, you know, wondering, you know, are we replacing those every year? I think, I think all of us have sort of had the problems with, at, at our, at our home when you all of a sudden, you know, you need to change your filter and you have the wrong size there and you throw something in temporarily. But, you know, that's a little alarming to me that that stuff was sort of getting by before. You know, that it comes to this. I mean, luckily, it's a pretty easy change. But, you know, how, how often were we sort of looking at this before? And, and, you know, how did that sort of slip through the cracks? That's it really, and I have for you.
Yeah, sure. And I, I think I could be, I, I'll be transparent in my answer with that. And first, filters are usually changed twice a year. Sometimes more depending on use and depending on the, the particular unit. Bukeur, for example, where it says that the wrong size filter was inserted, is, you know, and in my past year, you know, I've been forthcoming with the school committee, especially during budget talks and, you know, the requests for increases in certain lines. And I think that funding has been a challenge throughout the years in our schools, especially when it comes to the, the maintenance and facilities budgets. So if somebody had 12 filters on the shelf that were, you know, two inches too short, I, I think that they, they may have felt that they were doing the district a service of saving money and not having to procure the correct filters because we had those on the shelf. Coming in, you know, my approach is to do what we're supposed to do at whatever cost that it is, right? And, you know, taking what we're supposed to do and making sure that we get the best cost on it. Because, you know, putting in the, the wrong size filter has ramifications on the equipment downstream, right? So if you're not filtering all of the dirt and, you know, all of the contaminants, then you're putting the other equipment at risk. And ultimately, you're, you're, I don't want to use the term putting health at risk, but you're, you're not doing a service for the people that are in those spaces. So I think all good intentions, trying to be frugal, sometimes leads to those decisions. And I, I hope that that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you very much. Perfect.
Okay, bad news all. Mr. Bailey delivered the timer. Peter, you're up next.
Hi. Hi, sir. A couple, a few, four quick questions. What date will we be able to complete all this work? By what date?
My hope is by 9:12, all of these items are knocked off of the list. You know, and that's why I'm trying to keep this list updated a couple of times a day is because as lead times change, I'm updating that. So my hope and my, you know, best estimate right now would be 9:12. But there are some items that, you know, for example, the, the filters, everybody in the country is following ASHRAI's advice to upgrade to MERV 13. You know, this wasn't really the, the standard in most commercial, in educational facilities. So not only do they have to be manufactured, but they also need the materials to manufacture the filters. And as you're aware, many of the textile and, like, the textile industry right now is suprem, is extremely volatile. A lot of people have converted over to making masks. You know, people have probably seen in the news that disinfecting wipes, for example, are pushed out till 2021 in some cases. But every day I'm on the phone with our suppliers saying, I need the date, I need the date. And that hasn't changed. I'm expecting the filters in the first week in September and will mobilize our staff to do that. You know, for things that are within our control, we're getting those knocked off the list right away. If it's a belt change, our maintenance technician is capable of changing a belt. So those are coming off the list. Some of those are going to come off the list this afternoon. If there's extended lead times, then what we're trying to do is also scenario plan for backups, right? So what if we can't have a unit ventilator in a classroom um put back online before students come back in? Well, we have ordered backup standalone HEPA filtration units that we'd be able to install in the place of that. Um, so we do have air filtration. We would open the windows and bring fresh air in with box fans in the window. Um, so that question, uh, Peter, will, you know, be evolving constantly. And that's why I felt it was necessary to publicize my working document. Um, so everybody can have kind of an insight of where we stand on things. My intent is you'll see less yellow and unshaded and more green as the week, as the next two weeks progress. And we'll be sure to update the committee and everybody else if, if there is a serious risk of opening our building safely.
I appreciate that because we're really cutting it down to the wire. Um, a couple of things you just said. One, I, I want to be clear, these filters do not filter out viruses, correct?
I think I would be making an irresponsible statement if I, if I stated that. So the intent of upgrading to the MERV thirteen is not to filter out the virus that causes COVID nineteen. The intent is to um filter out other contaminants such as dander, pollen, um and other items that would cause discomfort to occupants. So if you're bringing in pollen, for example, while keeping your dampers open to a hundred percent outside air, that makes a person sitting at a desk wearing a mask a little more uncomfortable than usual would probably cause them to touch their eyes, their face, um and cause other, um, you know, things that we, we, we want to mitigate.
Right. And you mentioned boxed fans. Does, does all of this, I, I thought we weren't allowed to use fans because it would just spread water droplets. Does this HVAC, all of these repairs to the HVAC system, is, is that going to help make like cooling and heating? Especially at the middle school, because in the fall, it's just unbearably hot. And in the winter, it becomes frigid.
Can I answer something in that real quick? Um, I asked that exact same question about the fans of the public health nurses. And they have responded to that in the document that eventually will get pretty and posted. And they did say they asked the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, who did say using fans was okay, because I had heard the same thing, because you can't get your hair blow-dried, so why could you use a fan? But it, it sounds like we can use fans. Go ahead.
The, the, you know, the long and the short of it is, is a unit ventilator is a fan, right? You're taking air from the outside and you're distributing it across the room. There, um, so that, that might answer the question a little bit. Um, there's, I haven't seen guidance that says do not use fans. But I'm not sure if we would be able to find an environmental engineer that would say, yeah, go ahead and put a stamp on it. But if Department of Public Health is saying it's okay, then that's um good for us right now.
Oh, and lastly, I know you, you, you mentioned in our last meeting that you believe that staffing is sufficient right now to, to, to all the cleaning that's necessary. I mean, I have my doubts. I was, worked in the schools for four years and I never saw desks get cleaned. Um, sometimes rooms went, went without being cleaned for days. I just worry that we don't, we're, we're, we're not going to have the staffing for cleaning, especially now that they also have to maintain systems. I worry that this is going to fall on teachers, staff and students to, to do the cleaning who might not have the, you know, the safety equipment to do it, the proper safety equipment. Um, I worry about how effective the cleaning will be and what about shared items? I'm just wondering if we have the staffing and should we consider bringing more folks on board?
Yeah, and um, I, I'm really glad that you asked me that question because I didn't get a chance to clarify, you know, my last statement. So if every single employee is reporting for their shift and they're not taking any paid time off under their collective bargaining agreement, then we have the adequate staffing. The challenge is, is when we do not have staff in their, at their post. Working on creative solutions with the custodial union now to address that. We've posted online an advertisement for substitute custodians. So if, you know, since we have two hundred people out there watching this meeting, if you have an interest in part-time work that's active and serves a great purpose, we'd love to have you part of our team. So please go on the district website and find the link. You know, and so that's the challenge that we're facing now, that we have to make sure that, you know, people are at their post and having backup plans for when people are not. Um, so that's going to take some shifting of duties. And there's also tasks that the custodians have done in the past where there's been a strong focus on floor care and burnishing and buffing floors. Well, we're taking that off of the table right now. The priority number one isn't to have the supermarket shine on the floor, it is to wipe surfaces and disinfect. And I just met with all of the lead custodians right before I jumped on this meeting, and they're all in agreement with that, right? They realize that they have to pivot and it, the job is just different right now. So I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Peter, because it is probably my biggest concern right now is the staffing piece, is if somebody's out or if there's a person out on a long-term absence. You know, but I'll work with the superintendent and assistant superintendent to fill those holes, um, you know, as we move forward.
I mean, this just seems, the, this whole, the whole plan, if anything in person is going to rely on keeping everything clean. And I just, like I said, I watched rooms go for days without any, any kind of cleaning being done. Floors nor desks. And I just, I just think it's an area we should invest in because the whole system falls apart if we can't keep the cleaning running.
Correct. And, and I think that when you, when you bring up the point that classrooms would go days without cleaning, and, and that's usually attributed to absence, absences, right? And, you know, going through the data, I, I don't think that we have a huge problem with people abusing sick time. But, you know, under the collective bargaining agreement, they are entitled to vacation and personal time. Um, and we just have to be able to have the mechanism to backfill that because now more than ever, we have to make sure that we have the coverage. It's not something that you can get away with just by emptying the trash barrels and walking away. There's specific duties that are non-negotiable that have to get done every single night.
Yeah, I would just encourage you to, to, to bulk up on permanent staff, um, just so there's enough overlap and that we're not. And if we have, if we're bringing in substitutes, there again is the question is where, where else are they working? What other communities? We're introducing another person into the, into our bubble.
I think we have the same exact thought, so I, I thank you for bringing that, that up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's Michelle Horgan's turn.
Hi. Um, before I ask my question, um, I just wanted to piggyback on what Peter was saying. And I don't want to add more work to your plate, Tom, but I'm in charge of the volunteers at Accord Food Pantry, thinking outside the box, it box. If you needed volunteers in this community to help clean the school without violating any union contracts, I'm telling you, I could mobilize fifty to seventy-five people in a heartbeat to get in there and help school. Again, not adding more to your plate, but that's available. And um, I know there's, there'd be people that'd be more than willing to help, so.
Now is a great time to just toss stuff on the plate because it's already fallen off the table and I'm, I'm handling it, so thank you.
Okay.
And I, and I will take you up on that and reach out to you and, and see what we can do.
Great, thank you. Um, so my question, looking at the chart that shows the red and yellow, as a parent and a layperson, my first reaction was like, oh my lord, that's, that's alarming. Um, but here you talk about this, you are saying that the reds and the yellows are fixable, it's not going to bring harm um to our children and our staff. Everything that you've presented, it can be fixed and it is workable and manageable, correct?
That's correct. There is, um, there is nothing on this sheet that causes significant concern to me to safely open up the schools. And I think that where there's any risk of not being able to complete one hundred percent, that we'll have a plan B to still bring the students in safely.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
All right, Dana?
Hi. Um, thank you to all of my um school committee colleagues for asking many of the questions that I wanted to ask. Um, Tom, so um, all of these proposed fixes, are they all, do they all represent good practices for normal times? Or are any of these something that you're doing specifically only because of the COVID that are being done in a way that would, you would not typically recommend? So are any of these things that going forward will need to be reversed or changed as when we get back to quote-unquote "normal times"?
Um, that, that is a good question. So it's a mix of both. Correcting all of these deficiencies first returns everything to its original design intent. And all of the design intent for these items are to provide ventilation into the classrooms. On some of the units, when it comes to, um, you'll, you'll see on my action list anywhere where you'll see uh AHU or RTU. And I'll highlight this one since I'm still sharing my screen as an example. Due to the response, to the pandemic response, we're looking at opening up to a hundred percent outside air. Doing that in a unit that provides cooling, um, you wouldn't typically do that, right? Right now, the best guy, you know, the best practice from a health standpoint is to bring in a hundred percent fresh air. But that's going to affect thermal comfort, right? So in a space that could normally maintain seventy-two to seventy-four degrees with cooling, if we're bringing in more outside air, then we're just, you know, affecting that comfort level when it comes to air conditioning. So on those areas, yes, I would say that that is a response uh because we want to bring in as much fresh air as possible and not recirculate air. But some of the other items in, in the fall on a unit ventilator, which is the predominant piece of equipment throughout our district classrooms, during the fall, you would be bringing in a hundred percent outside air if you're not heating the space.
So I, so those are, you, I, that was helpful. First of all, that was helpful. So those are used, you're being used in a different way or modified. But I guess what I'm wondering is anything being installed or equipment that would be, then need to be uninstalled or, or, or?
I, I think I understand. So a lot of those things that I just talked about when it comes to our um units that we can program logic into, that can be reversed relatively easy. So we're not making a large investment and then have to reverse it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stacy, you're up.
Uh, Tom, you've done a great job of this. I just, I know you've done a lot of work and I really appreciate it. And I know that some of the stuff on this has been going, I mean, some of it, we've had issues like for a decade or so, for a long time. But I just want to make sure, I know you think you could have it um done, or you're saying you'll have it done by the twelfth. What is back at plan if it can't be done in time? And are you going to be letting us know to make sure, adjustments? And then the last thing, um, are you feeling confident that our schools with this air and all these fixes will have the um air quality um safe for both the, um, for our students and teachers?
Um, I think that if there's a major risk of something not being done, the minute I find out, I'm going to notify the superintendent, who will then, you know, notify you if there's a risk of any space in our district. Could you just, I'm sorry, could you repeat the, the last part of the question?
Yeah. Um, and are you, uh, are you, with these fixes, are you feeling confident that it's safe for the um teachers and students to um in the classroom with the air quality?
Yeah, I, I think that's a big question to ask um during a um.
I understand. I think that's just everyone's.
However, I think that our, like, if we can return all of our infrastructure to its design intent, then yes, I, I feel, I feel safe, um, just as safe as I did on March twelfth. Um, but there's just so many unknowns, um, you know, globally. And, and I'm sorry if I'm not instilling confidence with my answer.
No, I totally understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. May I ask one more brief question?
Oh, you want to jump in on my time? Yeah, sure.
No, sorry. No, as a follow-up, how often um will the rooms be cleaned? And when, I guess, when and how often will the cleaning be done? Because it's my understanding we need to clean frequently throughout the day. And who's, do we have this, who's going to do that?
Yep, if I can, um, Peter, if I'm, I'm kind of like in ventilation mode right now. But if I can point you to the plan, um, there is a section about cleaning, which refers to the frequencies and also for our um emergency response cleaning and how we handle that. Um, so that should be listed in the plan. Uh, but just to quickly answer it, so I don't take too much time away from the rest of the agenda for you folks, we're looking at two to three tours per day of all the common areas for frequently touched surfaces. You know, we've procured the safest chemicals on the market to be able to do so and also the equipment to do it efficiently um and safely. Um, so we're looking at two to three times a day in the common areas for frequently touched surfaces and a nightly sanitizing and disinfection of all student learning stations, whether it be a desk or any other of the creative um elementary stations that will be having.
And, and you're still confident we have the staffing to do this because we just, we just cut your, your department?
We did. And, you know, it was, the, the cut was held in the maintenance department, which is, you know, we have contractors lined up to be able to backfill some of those duties if needed. Um, on the cleaning side, like I said, I'll, I'll go back, you know, just keep repeating. If we have everybody at their post, we generally have, we, we have the staffing to accomplish that. Right now, it's filling the holes on the backup plans when someone is out. And that's just part of the work that we're going to be doing, you know, over the next few weeks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Michelle.
Um, would you classify the things that we're needing as things that were unbudgeted and are related directly to COVID?
Um, I think that if it wasn't such a, a fat, like a rush to get things done in a short amount of time, then yes, we would be adequately budgeted for a lot of these repairs. Because we are, you know, in competition with, you know, every other school district who's doing the same type of repairs, we are paying a premium for some of the labor services. So that piece would be unbudgeted, but if any of these items showed up on a regular basis, we would fix them and we would fund the repair of that.
So you would say they do qualify for CARES Act money or they don't?
I would make, definitely make the case that it would qualify for CARES Act. So I, I do think that it's a response and, you know, the timing and the, and the, and the quickness and the swiftness of the response would definitely, um, you know, fall under that line. But I would have to review that with, uh, you know, Vinnie and the superintendent.
Going to be using our buildings, maybe they can help us with some of those costs because they're going to be doing the town meetings and stuff. Are the Ashray standards um in excess or equal to OSHA standards for health, for air quality?
I'd have to research that a bit. You know, in, in my field, you know, where OSHA doesn't necessarily govern over municipalities and, and school districts. I have to admit that I'm not as familiar, you know, as I am with Ashray and other best practices for municipalities.
Okay.
But I, I would say that Ashray, you know, I, I'm sure that OSHA would extract some of their information from Ashray as they are the leading peer group worldwide.
Yeah, I think I had mentioned that to you earlier too, like, what, what are these standards? So that's great. Um, and my last question is, are you requiring that custodians wear masks all the time they're in the building, even if they're there at night alone?
Um, our masking policy is something that I think we're going to have to work out. Like, for example, right now, I'm in a confined space alone in my office with the door closed and I'm not wearing a mask. And I would think if the custo- And I would think if the custodial staff is, you know, a lot, in our elementary schools, they're typically working alone in an empty building. So, but I think that I would have to default to some of our health experts on the recommendation.
Okay, so we'll add that to the list of things to address.
But our custodial staff and some of our other high-risk employees, we've sourced enough KN95 masks to be able to provide to them for the instances that they feel that they're more at risk.
And the foggy machines we bought last year to disinfect related to the flu, are they effective on the COVID virus?
Sure, so just, I mean, because I think that, you know, words matter with some of this equipment. Is it, they're, they're actually electrostatic machines. Boggers just operate a little differently and are not particularly the best thing to use in a building that's occupied. Electrostatic just charges the chemical as it comes out and causes it to wrap on a hard surface. So we purchased handheld units, it was actually upon my entry for each school. They're always good to have on hand in cases of suspected case of MRSA or if there's a flu outbreak. So I believe we purchased those in October or November, right before they started flying off the shelf. That supply chain stabilized, so we purchased a backup handheld electrostatic applicator and also a backpack electrostatic applicator for some of the, you know, for part of our emergency response plans. So each school is equipped with two handheld units and one backpack unit. And we've also sourced the ready-to-use disinfectant that I believe is zero across the board on the health scale and is a botanical-based disinfectant. That is part of the list and that the CDC and EPA has put out that's effective against COVID-19.
Super, thank you. Are you staying on for, during the plan?
Yeah, I have a big stake in it, so yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to move on. So this would, us, at the discussion of the fall reopening plan, I would propose that we take a recess. But it's up to you guys if you feel you need it. So how do people feel about that?
Your, your intention is for us to have a recess so that we can read it since we got some portion of it quite. How long a recess do you anticipate?
Well, if people want a recess, then we'll talk about it. I don't know, 20 minutes?
I would like a recess just because I definitely don't think I've really, really read all the latest. But I don't think it should be long, like 10, 15 minutes max personally.
Anybody besides Anna and I need a recess?
That would be, I'm gonna, that would be fine with me.
I'm in favor of it.
There's four of us. So I am going to entertain a motion to take a 15-minute recess. So I'm going to make it returning at, I'm just going to make it at 1:10. Two minutes in there, but does anybody want to make that motion? Maybe Dana?
I move that we recess for approximately 15 minutes to return at 1:10 PM.
Second.
All in favor, Anna?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Bill Bailey, yes. So people can just turn off their mics and turn off their video and then that'll be like one recess. All right, it is 1:10. So I guess we're unadjoining. I just want to make a note that in the last vote to adjourn, David Palito did not vote because I was unaware that he was there. Because he had his video off, so I just want to make note of that. He is here. He just doesn't have his video on because he's with his phone and that's a little, you know, he doesn't want to give us all roller coasters tummy. So, um, all right, so now that we're back, I just do want to make note that there are people who have their hands raised and we're not going to be recognizing people from there. And we also have questions that are going into the Q and A, which we probably won't have time to answer. So sorry, but we've been at this a while and you had a lot of chances to get in touch with us. And there will be another month before school starts to can be in touch with those concerns and we can try and answer them. So Mary Beth has some slides, I think she's going to share with us. I would propose then we would ask questions, I think I'm going to cut that down to two minutes because it took along the time here. And then we can have like discussion, like ask questions, but then after we'll have time for discussion. So go ahead, Mary Beth. And you're on mute, so when you get ready, just remember that too. It's a lot to manage with all the technology. I have to put myself on you.
So, good afternoon, all. I know that you have some big decisions to make this afternoon and I thought I would attempt to just frame those decisions for you as we move forward. The first piece is, I'm going to keep putting these up there, key messages. Uncertainty is a given, answers will evolve. We will have some answers by the end of today's meeting, but other answers will continue to evolve. We know that learning is going to change next year. This is going to bring both opportunity and loss. And our goal is to work together with flexibility and collaboration and being mindful of positive intent. The committee today has three critical tasks. The first is to vote a reopening plan that is in alignment with the DESE directive. The committee also needs to clarify the likely learning environment, be it in-person, hybrid, or remote, that students will enter into on September 14th. And then the committee needs to clarify how the district will monitor COVID trajectories and pivot learning environments when data suggests this is appropriate. So task one is to submit a plan to DESE by August 14th, which is today, that provides clarity on how the district will offer three critical programming. One is how we pivot our K-12 learners from in-person to hybrid in remote learning environments as COVID trajectories may change. How we meet the families, the needs of families that need a fully remote option that does not pivot. And then how do we meet the, the need of vulnerable populations? What the committee has received and the community should know that this is the exhibit on today's agenda is we have put forth a plan that does these things that the, the state has asked us to do along with safety protocols. If you, and, and measures that are in place, some nursing protocols. So our plan is flushed out here and we can pop back and forth to it through the course of the meeting if you would like. Again, I'd like the community to know this is available to them as part of the exhibit. So one of the open questions that has remained from the original presentation from the plan is what the fully remote model would look like at the middle level and the elementary level? And what I, what I thought would be helpful in terms of framing your conversation is to give you a high-level summary of the middle-level options and have you indicate which, which way you would like to go. As a reminder to the committee and to the community, an analysis was done of additional remote options. A, this analysis was provided to the committee and there were, there were two options put forth. One, per the direction of the committee, was to ensure that teachers, we, Hamilton-Wentham teachers would be the people delivering instruction to students in the fully remote program. Under the recommended option at the middle level, we, we have figured out a way to have remote learners actually form a separate class in, in Hamilton-Wentham teacher schedules at the middle level. These students would be assigned to a crew, so they are engaged with other students in the building. This particular model adds about 81,000 of unbudgeted expenses and there is some less flexibility with that. Alternatively, we could have one Hamilton-Wentham teacher, middle school teacher focus be a coach, engaging in a platform design for remote learning. It is possible that this two would have an additional cost of 81,000. We would have to see where staffing lands in terms of providing that teacher. And this particular modality gives you the, the students greater flexibility in their schedule. Their, and in the ability to move back and forth between a fully remote and the, the pivoting model. So again, you have the full analysis of this and I would open it up to, to questions at this time. Michelle, would you like to chair that, that debate?
Sure, I'm just going to ask for my first question. When you, when you've talked about the pivot being at the semester, do you mean the quarter or do you literally mean the semester halfway break?
Yeah, this was a conversation that took place and the middle-level folks feel that in order to provide the recommended option, that the, the change would need to happen at a semester break. So that's halfway through the year, not the quarter. I know that we have Craig on the line, so if you, who is the principal of the middle school. So Craig, anything you want to add to that?
No, just, I, I agree with you, Mary Beth, that looking at the way our scheduling and balancing would need to flush out. Making frequent and shorter-term changes would be far more complicated. And I'm not sure that's something we could execute effectively. So that's why we went for the semester mark.
So, does anybody have questions about the fully remote model at the middle school?
I do, Michelle.
And.
I do also.
A minute, buddy, go.
I'm sorry, you cut out.
You have a minute, go.
I don't even need a minute. Was, was this option A, when we were presented with the four options, was this option A the recommended one?
Which one, the recommended?
Remember, we had option A, option B for the middle school? This was option A, right?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Anna?
Craig, can you talk a little bit more about how the schedule actually works for the fully remote middle schoolers? That question came from a community member that I thought was good. And you shared with us a chart of sorts that was really helpful. The high school portion has a chart. Is there a way that you could share that or show that for people to understand physically how remote schedules with the middle school schedule?
I, I don't have that accessible to me at this particular moment. But essentially what would happen if we opened in a hybrid model, then students would either be an in-person hybrid or they would be a fully remote student. So students who chose to be fully remote, we would schedule them intentionally as a group. So instead of having, you know, instead of my third-period math class, if I'm a third, if I'm a math teacher, having kids in front of me physically, I would have a, a group of students who were being grouped together and I would teach them remotely. So instead of synchronous in-person instruction, it would be synchronous remote instruction. So we would have that group of kids work through a Zoom platform instead of being in the classroom with the teacher.
Okay, so then based on that, that's what I thought. I wanted to make sure I had it right. So based on that then, would that remote group of students be heterogeneous by grade level?
They would be homogeneous by grade, so they would all be in the same grade level. So we would have a class of sixth graders, a class of seventh graders and a class of eighth.
That's, that's what I mean. So if there are students within that remote section who wanted to participate in advanced math or some of their honors curriculum, would they have access to that?
So this is where that addition, additional 81,000 of unbudgeted expenses comes in. In order to provide different levels of math, and math would really be the, the key driver of that. You would need an additional math teacher to staff that. What, because, because of the way we don't know how that's going to split out between, you know, if we have 16 kids who want to do a full remote version in eighth grade and four of them want to do algebra and 12 of them are not in algebra, the, the scheduling of that becomes complicated. And I'm not, I don't believe we can support that with the staffing we have in place. We're, we're already looking at a reduction in our math teaching positions from last year. So everybody is, is tight on that.
Would this additional hire help make that more possible though? And that's my interpretation of what that budget request is.
Yes, so there's, there's a lot of detail work that we need to do with the math department as well as a new math six through 12 curriculum leader who is yet to be hired to, to get the finer details that I'm sure everybody would love. But what we're envisioning in the big picture is that this person would teach it some sections of, or some classes for seventh and eighth grade accelerated in algebra. And they would also be able to provide intervention supports for some of our struggling math students. Ideally, we would also have this person take a lead role in assessing students as they come back. That's going to be a, a key task for us is to find out where students are with their math abilities, given the, the spring and a long summer, so.
Okay, can you describe how special education services would be provided to middle school kids who are on the fully remote option?
Stacy may be the better person to do that, but they would have opportunities to check in with their liaisons during, during the week. And on an individual basis, we would look at their plans and determine if they are going to be, have additional supports. I'm, I'm, as far as fully remote, that's a something I think I want Stacy to jump in on if she can.
Stacy, are you on the line?
I am, I'm unmuted. As Craig were saying, Craig was saying, we would be looking at the students individually. Looking at their individual education programming and developing remote learning plans to support students who are in the full remote model.
And would you also have similar supports, I'm assuming, for kids who are not fully remote, the hybrids as well? On their remote days, really the remote part of hybrid would also have daily special ed support? Even if you weren't fully remote, can you talk about that?
Yeah, so for, for the fully remote students, there would be special education support. And again, it's individualized. It's not, I will share that they're not mirror matches to the IEP, but it will include synchronous remote services if required and some asynchronous supports. For students in the hybrid, so in-person and remote, we would be looking at their, their IEP and then developing the hybrid remote service plan or individual learning plan for the students. And again, it's individualized. For many students, they would be receiving their in-person services and then we'd look at what additional supports are needed during the remote learning days for them. We have some students who are at a higher need level. For example, some of our programs, which we would be having come in four days a week for in-person services.
So that's a perfect lead-in. I have a concern about least restrictive environment for the four-day kids, both at the middle and high school and elementary level. They seem like they're getting grouped off. Can you address that concern a bit?
The middle and high school students would be following a cohort schedule for their two days and running the middle and high school. And then they would come in for two, one or two additional days depending on their level of need.
So would they, would they be integrated in them in terms of? And that's the one part of that section of the special learners that I'm a little confused on. Just in terms of making sure they're not bifurcated because they're there three to four days a week. Because a lot of IEPs talk about level of inclusion. So if they're in a separate cohort, I, I'm legitimately a little concerned that students are going to be taken out of the inclusion part of their IEP if they're grouped that way.
It depends on the level. So again, the middle and high school level with the cohort, regular schedule. So they naturally already shift classrooms. And so our students would be participating in their cohort and changing and participating in whatever gen ed classes they have. As well as having any of their scheduled special education services during those two days. The additional two days would be in their program classes. We wouldn't be assigning them to another cohort. So they'd be getting another level of instruction and support for their goal, support with any of the remote assignments that are required in those three days off. And again, that, I just, in-person days would be dependent on the individual needs of the student. It could be one day, it could be two days depending on their level of need.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think my time's up for now. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question on the middle school plan? And David, if you have a question, because I can't see a hand, if you can just unmute yourself and then I'll know. Okay, moving on. No questions here.
Okay. And do we want to, just for purposes of efficiency, is there any, are people supporting the recommended option? Or are they asking that we move to the other option?
So, I'm not going to vote. I think it's better just to vote the whole plan, but we can get a consensus here. So we did this before, let's just go, you could just raise your hand for consensus because we're not, it's not actual vote. If you feel that the recommended option is the way we should go, raise your hand. David will unmute his mic, that'll tell us that.
This was option A.
It was option A. So it looks like we have consensus that that's what we'll include. We'll see when we get the whole plan together. Okay, this is for students who choose to be fully remote. Or who parents choose, because kids don't get to make all the decisions about themselves and their lives, yeah.
Okay, the next kind of open question that we had related to the plan was the fully remote model for elementary. So what I'd like to do here is give you a high level summary of what is in the full analysis. Again, this analysis is available to people based on Monday's meeting. If you go online to the agenda, you will find it there. At the at the elementary level, we have a recommended option of having a K two and and three five Hamilton one of teachers. Playing the role primarily as coaches and and part of that may be some direct instruction. Having students on a platform edgenuity that is designed for remote learning with dash with a dashboard to assess student progress. This particular models allows for significant integration with their students' homeschool environment. We've talked about things like morning meetings and whole school book reads. It also provides students access to tools like Lexi or Dreambox that students in the pivoting program will also be using to reinforce critical reading and math skills. I wanted quickly just to talk a little bit about why the platform has a lot of value to families. This is an example of a couple of activities on the platform. One, you can, this one right here, you can see is a a video that is going to do instruction related to order peers and graphing. Down here, you see a more primary model where the students are dragging in the sound that has the short ice. The picture that has the short eye sound. This type of development of content is is time intensive. And the the program edgenuity that we're looking at has this all built out for every grade level. If we try to recreate this with one teacher assigned to each level, we are, we are most likely not going to be, not most likely, we are not going to be able to have the same level of sophistication and professionalism in terms of the delivery of the information. The other piece I wanted to just inform the board about it, for many people who may not be aware of how these forms work, is that the teacher or the the K two coach or the three five coach has a dashboard of all the students that would be involved in this program. They can monitor their overall progress. They can see how they're doing on a variety of assessments. And they they can also see how much time they're spending on these programs. And so it it they can reach out to them if they see a place where they're having difficulty. And they can monitor on a constant basis how students are doing through a developed dashboard. Again, if we try to recreate this in our our district, this we will not be able to achieve the same high level of monitoring for our students that are in the fully remote mode. So I didn't want to just bring those two things to your attention. The alternative option that we have put forth to the committee that that met the criteria of having grade level Hamilton one of teachers teaching at each grade level. What we know about that is that two out of the four out of the six would need to be new hires. And it is likely that the teachers that students would be assigned to would be unfamiliar to them. And the majority of them would likely be new. The content creation will need to be done by teachers. They will try, you know, in this model, they would work to have it aligned to the instructional materials we're using in classrooms. But again, the instructional materials in classrooms are primarily designed for in person learning. This model does add three hundred and twenty four thousand of unbudgeted expenses to the budget. And it provides less flexibility and more disruption if students return to their homeschool. They would be put in a class similar to the middle school model of remote learners at second grade. But that class is going to be comprised of remote learners at second grade at Buick or Winthrop and Cutler. So if they're returning back to their homeschool, they'll be returning to a new classroom. So that gives you an overview of the the options that have been vetted by our team. And I, at this point, I would open it up to any questions that the the committee might have. And I would invite our elementary principals to join us in this conversation.
Okay, okay, there we go. Um. So what we're talking about here is just the elementary model. There's there's two options here. We've heard about these before. Today, we had an opportunity to see just a quick snippet of what the fully remote like program that we would be buying into looks like. So we are going to ask questions about this. Yeah, okay, so Michelle Horgan, then Anna.
Okay, um, like the middle school program, will the remote students be able to reenter after semester or sooner?
The remote students under the the first plan, the recommended plan, there would, there would probably continue to be that four to six week timeframe for people to move back. Again, when we we trying to take kids from totally different classroom structures in the 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 second option, the the recommended recommendation at this time from the elementary principals is that holds to the semester change, just because kids are are moving from one one type of classroom to another type of classroom. And if I have, uh, do we have elementary principals on the call here? Jen, do you want to speak to that at all in terms of the the challenges with moving? And is there any flexibility in terms of making that timeline any shorter?
Sure, I talked to a lot of concerned parents this week, and I think our message is we want to problem solve this with you in a way that really works for your family and for your child. So if somebody tries this for a couple of weeks and it's a disaster and they want to call their elementary principal and say, I, we need help. We need to brainstorm, we need to think about solutions. That's what the three of us are here to do. Because this is a new endeavor for all of us. And I, as I I have talked to a lot of parents this week that are thinking about this option, and they all have different structures in their home, schedules in their day and needs for their family. So we're looking at this as the most flexible way to really try to meet those needs while keeping kids attached back to our three schools. And we don't want a lot of jumping back and forth because we know that's disruptive for kids. But we really are trying to work with families to think about, can we make it through the fall? Can we can we think about, at least I would say, the third week of school is the hardest week? Because those for the for the second week is a honeymoon and the third week, everything's real. So I'm encouraging everybody to kind of hang in there through those first three weeks to try it out and get into some routines and see if it works. And then we'll problem solve. And it might be that we just need to give a little extra support to a family or to a child. Or it might be that we need to really look at other options for that family and maybe bringing kids back into the hybrid model. So there's no one right answer for any of this. And that's why we're just trying to make it as flexible as possible.
Great, thank you.
Anna, I'll start the clock again for you.
Okay, thanks, just a couple of questions. In terms of switching the other way, if students started hybrid and that was too much, could they switch to remote at any time? And I guess that also applies to the middle school as well, the the other directional switch. How's how often can they do that?
I think it's almost easier to make that switch in some way. There's less logistics of the building that would change. So again, we don't want to have kids coming and going back and forth frequently. But we just want to make this work for everybody. So if we can just kind of try it and then problem solve it, I think it's it's actually easier to switch kids into this model, I think, than the reverse.
Okay, so then my question, next question is scalability. What, is there a breaking point in terms of the coach side of edgenuity? Have we thought, like, what happens just hypothetically if, you know, first grade? It was the threshold at which point you might say, wow, we have one remote teacher for case for true. And that person now is the coach for, say, sixty children. Is that, is that what's the scale on that and where, what happens when we get to that point?
I know that we have a definite scale on that. We really need information. We've got preliminary information and that's how we've made our plans. But we're really hoping that maybe even today, we can release a survey to families to ask them for what their intentions are. And then we'll start to problem solve. We've already identified two classroom positions that we can move to become coaches because we won't have student, those students in those bubbles needing three physical classrooms in in at Winthrop or Cutler at those, that first and third grade bubble. But we're also very carefully tracking what we think, you know, who we think will be in the building and how we can combine positions or make, create some flexible options to make more remote positions if we need it.
Okay.
Piece again, we're just trying to put it all together.
Okay. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, and part of that has to do with where those kids are coming from. So if we have a few first graders, you know, kind of across the three schools, that doesn't buy us up staff members to move over to that remote piece. But if in Buick or half of my first graders all want to go remote, then it's very easy for me to have one teacher take the remaining half and one teacher go support those remote students.
Okay, and I guess backing up step, if Craig is still on the line, the the middle school scalability, I didn't ask that question then. Is that?
I can probably answer that too. If it was one here is that it's the same feedback at the elementary level that moving from the hybrid into the fully remote model is easier than reversing it back. Craig, would you, if I get that right from the middle perspective?
I'm not entirely sure about that. I think it will be equally complicated both ways because we're going to have to dedicate a student to a either a a remote cohort or an in person cohort or group of class. I guess we'll use cohorts being overused. And I wouldn't want a student to come, be starting a remote group, come back and have to be. Yes, it, yes, we can do it, but it will be, it will be, I don't know if it's more complicated either way. As far as scalability, if we start, if we have twelve kids to make a class and we scale up to twenty four, then that teacher just teaches two classes remotely rather than in person. So that it is scalable.
Okay, that's great, actually. That was a concern. Okay, thank you.
Okay, talking and you can't hear me. David has a question, so.
Yeah, um, my question is really, you know, you you're talking about the layout of the program and the fact that, you know, we we really don't have the capabilities of creating such a robust program in house. With that in mind, how does that, in how does that transition to our hybrid model that will, you know, eventually be going all online?
I'm going to ask the elementary principals to respond to that. So what I think I'm hearing you say, David, is that the core academics that are being delivered online through edgenuity and and indicating that that's a more robust platform than designing it in house. If the elementary principals can speak to what core instruction looks like at the hybrid model and then what the bill, the design build out is in terms of the remote portion of the program.
So when we think about shifting from that hybrid model to the remote piece, one of the, one of the pieces that we have there is we have large teams. That we've had, end up with a small cohort of teachers who will be doing this full remote option. So that's a lot of legwork for them to kind of kind of shift our curriculum, which is really designed to be taught face to face, into something more remote. Whereas if we go from, if we toggle from that hybrid system into the remote, because conditions suggest that that's appropriate, then we've got a group of five or six or seven teachers all teaching the same grade level, the same content, who can work together, pool their resources to make that instruction more appropriate online.
And David, are you concerned about remote days in the hybrid model and what instruction looks like on those days? Is that part of that question?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, Salem was hybrid for not even seventy two hours before, you know, now they're moving to remote. So, you know, the 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 fact is it, you know, flips, the the switch flips that quickly, so.
No, um, and I feel like sometimes it switches three times a day. So I, our teacher design team really thought carefully about what in person experiences would look like for elementary kids and how to build remote experiences that built on those. So that was some of the key work that happened over the week, a little over a week, that teachers came together, really thinking about how to set up routines, expectations and just kind of that learning model that you can do, building relationships with kids in person. And then what can we think about asking them to go home and build upon those experiences? Ben, you do a nice job explaining this. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, within the hybrid model, sort of thinking about the, for the larger pattern, patterns and rhythms of learning is that there is some direct instruction and then there is some student practicing and some opportunity for asking clarifying questions. And taking those two days that a cohort is in school and prioritizing more of that direct instruction, front loading some of that direct instruction that might have traditionally happened later in the week. And then having those independent practicing activities happening on the remote days with access to a teaching assistant for clarifying questions. It's an assistant who was assigned to that cohort when those kids are in school, so that they were there for those initial lessons.
So I guess the last part of that question is really just what happens if you don't have the luxury of those two days instruction?
And that's where we have those, those, those larger, those larger groups of grade level teachers coming together to do that planning as a group. That's also a piece of those of the twelve days now that we have of teacher PD before school starts that Desi has given us to be able to take some of those initial pieces of the curriculum and adapt them for a more remote environment.
And I just also want to reiterate that the teachers over the summer have spent a significant amount of time doing technology training and learning how to adapt some of their teaching practices from what would have been happening in class to a more remote model. But we can all acknowledge that that's not the ideal. So ideally, we want to have them in school as much as we can, and then we give them the extensions to do when they're home.
All right.
Some people didn't take their time. Anna, it is one short question.
Yep, it's it's short. Is morning meeting only going to be on Wednesdays? Or is that intended to be something every day? And can all the kids on any version of remote hybrid taco, whatever, can they all join morning meeting or no?
So right now, the plan is that students who are in the hybrid model, who are in school, would be doing an in in person morning meeting. Students who are in the, on the hybrid days, no, on the at home days of their, of the hybrid model will have some sort of morning meeting with the teaching assistant. We need to do attendance, that's part of our next requirement, so there will be a piece there. What the Wednesday allows us to do is to bring those groups together. And also bring in anybody who is in that fully remote model so that we could have a little more coherence between that larger group.
And the fully remote model can join any morning meeting during the week that that hybrid at home kids are doing as well. It's just a matter of getting us all together and getting that organized. And really, once we know which children are doing which pieces, that becomes much easier to map out.
So based on that, then if there's a morning meeting happening all five days for every group, then the all remote people that we're describing here could theoretically join a morning meeting every day. Because part of their assigned class is always having a morning meeting. Is that right?
Yes, they could. I also know there's some worry from some fully remote families that that will be too much for their family to be able to connect into. So it wouldn't be a required morning meeting for those fully remote kids that will.
But if they wanted to, they could.
Yes.
Sweet, okay, thank you.
I had one question. If you're fully remote, it appears to me that you can still participate with the larger community for PE, music and art. Is that true?
True.
Right, so you're kind of like all remote hybridish, sort of, in some way.
You think, but yes, we're trying to make as many connections for kids back to our buildings as possible.
Okay, um. I can't see David on the screen, so I gotta go check. Stacy doesn't have her hand up. Okay, it looks like we're ready to, okay, so we want to find out if the committee sort of in general consensus-ish like not voting is interested in the recommended option. So if you're interested in probably supporting the recommended option and hopefully less than an hour, raise your hand. And I need to check one more. And I need to check one more place. Okay. Well, that's not a hundred percent, so that will be something we'll need to talk about more. All right. So let's continue on for the audience of three hundred and fifty.
Michelle, I don't know if now's the time to ask the question, but...
About what?
There's a clarification that needs to be made. You know, hybrid versus remote. If we, if we open in remote, if we elect as a committee to open in remote, that we have to, we're stuck in remote for the rest of the year? Is now the time to ask, or do we ask later?
Not the time to ask. But...
Okay.
No, but let's keep going.
Okay. I'll ask it later.
Hold on to it, though. Hold on to it.
Yep.
Okay. Let me continue on here. So at this point, we pulled off on the resolution language here and move on to task two, which is the clarifying the likely learning environment that students would enter into on September fourteenth. And I think this might get to your question, Peter, as well, that when the committee is giving an indication to the community as to what the likely environment is, knowing that things are mercurial and shifting from day to day, it is indicating, this is where we would begin. The whole intent of the model of in-person hybrid and remote is that it's shifting back and forth, dependent on the conditions that we find with COVID. That is why we have needed to separate out a fully remote option, because we have families that want and need an option that does not include any in-person. And by definition, the program that pivots includes in-person learning. So the second task in front of the committee is to clarify the likely learning environment that students will enter into on September fourteenth. Some of the data that the committee can use to make this decision is completion of the ventilation action items. So you heard this at the beginning of the meeting from Tom Garrity around what we are doing to ensure that our ventilation issues are resolved in this district. Looking at current COVID conditions, different metrics for the three learning environments. Chair of the Hamilton Board of Health, David Smith, has provided you some recommended metrics related to this, and then any other considerations that the committee may want to bring forward. So with that in mind, I'll just return back to, if I can, oh, I'm sorry. Two other things I wanted to offer here is, one, just providing you with the survey data. This was from July. It didn't change significantly from the August data, but this is where our community is indicating that they are interested in heading. And then also sharing with you the data from our teacher survey. You've seen this before, but probably information that should also be considered in your deliberations. So again, the second task is for the committee to debate and make a determination in terms of how it is most likely the district will open in the fall.
Okay. So there's two parts of this? Well, there's probably three parts of this, as I see it. One is how, we've talked about this sort of like COVID team that would sort of meet throughout the year to determine, like, when do we have to close down? When do we have to move to hybrid again? So if that, we have discussion about the metrics that have been proposed, and then we have the discussion about where we want to start. So, um, I guess I would like to talk about the team. Do we want to empower Mary Beth to set up a team to advise her throughout? Well, I don't know. Should we go with metrics first or team first? What do you think, Michelle Horgan? Like, do you understand what I'm saying in general, or do I need to explain it better?
I think it's fine, but I think we should set up the team first.
Okay. So, okay. So...
I think that we shouldn't be voting on how we're going to start before we vote on our plan, whether or not we approve the plan. I think that's putting the cart before the horse.
I think that this is like a piece that goes into the plan at the bottom, but if you want to vote that part first, that would be fine. Do we want to just go ahead and do that? I mean, throughout, we've kind of had consensus. Do we want to vote, like, so far, these are the models, and this is what we're good with, and we'll just be done with that?
I have a couple of questions about the plan.
I also have a couple unrelated questions about the plan that haven't come up yet.
I don't think we're, I think we're not, right now, we're just debating what we're voting on first, right? We're not asking questions.
Yeah. So people are saying, people are saying they have unresolved questions about the plan. So the question is, do we want to vote the plan first versus do we want to kind of talk through the issues and vote the plan at the end? So if you...
I think we should discuss the issues and then vote the plan afterwards. We discuss the issues to make sure that in everybody's mind, they've gone through all the facts, in my mind.
All right. Let's check out the plan, because worst-case scenario, we can get the plan, and then actually, we can do this next week because it's not, well, this part maybe we could do next week. I don't know, live or die. So, all right, let's do the plan. So I will allow one minute of questions on the plan itself. David had his hand up first. If after questions on the plan are done, we'll probably have a little bit more time to discuss in general, and then we'll see where we're at if people need more time. So David, feel free to start. You're going to get a few extra minutes here, or seconds.
All right. You know, I just wanted to sort of point out that, you know, we didn't necessarily have consensus on, you know, the direction. We had consensus over this option's better than this other option, right? So it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we have consensus on this. I'm not in love with this plan, but, you know, to say, to just vote no and say, I don't like it, and not have a better option is kind of a jerk thing to do, and it will only hold us up. But, you know, I'm not in love with this. So like, I don't like the term of using, you know, consensus. I think that there's a lot of stuff that still needs to be sorted out, and I think we're sort of rushing through it and then getting our information very late to be able to make very important decisions to do so. So, you know, that's where I just want to sort of open, you know, just put that out there to begin with. So...
Okay. Thank you. And Mary Beth, can you un-screen share, whatever that would be called, stop screen share? Thank you. Dave. And David, you know, no one appreciates the lateness comment more than I. Like, we needed the recess just to get the information read. I do, I appreciate that a lot. Other people, I question Dana.
So my understanding was, right now, we're really just asking specific questions about the plan, and I have some actual just questions, and they are just on the appendix of the plan, which involves, which involves the metrics, but it's written in the plan. And so on page, uh, sorry, under numerical metrics, which I think is on page thirty. I'm wondering, and I don't know whether we have one of the public health representatives here or not, but as I read this, I'm wondering whether it's just a typo, because if you read here numerical metrics, it says Essex County fourteen-day averages of cases and prevalence of cases equals twenty-two-point-four per thousand.
Andrew Ting is here.
Thinking that's per hundred thousand.
I'm just checking to see if we've got some of our Board of Health members on here.
Andrew Ting is here. Giselle Perez is here. I can't, was that Chris Smith? Is that the other guy from Hamilton?
Yeah. I'm going to bring up, who else did you say? I'm going to move Mary Beth up.
Andrew Ting, Giselle Perez.
Sorry. Who's the first one, Michelle?
Andrew Ting. Andrew Ting.
Andrew, okay. Thank you.
And Giselle with a G, Perez. And I'm looking, the others are further down the list if they're here.
Mary Beth, can you take a couple people off or panelists, like Ty Prima and Martha Hale-Ferrell, and put them back over at attendees?
Sure. Let me just...
Thank you.
These folks in, and then...
Looking for, Jerry's not here, so now I've got to go to Regina.
Okay. I have promoted the members of the Board of Health that you have indicated to panelists, and then I'll move other folks back.
Andrew Ting, too, is on.
He's there. Okay. So Mary Beth Ting, Andrew Ting, and Giselle Perez. If you want to unmute your mics, obviously, you do not need to put on video, but if you could unmute your mics, that'd be great. Thank you. Oh, Giselle disappeared off of my screen.
I'm here.
Oh. So Dana, do you want to sort of rephrase that again? Because I'm not sure they were prepared that they were going to talk, so they might not have written down notes or anything.
I am looking at what is on the top of page thirty of the plan, under numerical metrics, external. And specifically, I'm looking where it says Essex County fourteen-day averages of new cases equals sixty-three, and the trend to study prevalence of cases equals twenty-two-point-four per thousand. And it also, similarly, so I just wonder if that's accurate? Is that correct?
So do you guys know what we're talking about, or do you need us to project that?
It would be helpful. I don't know where we have access to look at the plan, so I can look at page thirty to reference what you're talking about.
Sure. Mary Beth, I guess we're back to screen sharing.
And for Board of Health members, this was the document that David Smith had provided. So it's basically copy-pasted into the plan, but I will pull that up as well so we can look at it.
And if by chance, David Smith, you are here under some other name that's not your own or the name of guest, if you could raise your hand, then we'll be able to recognize that it's you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Michelle, while we have a moment of getting to the point, I just have a process question. Since we have all the health people assembled at this precise moment, if we have questions about metrics, would you like us to ask all metric-related questions now?
Well, it looks like we needed to get to the metrics before we voted, so, you know. It might be going that way. Is it someone who's raised their hand? Just see if that's... Yeah, those are not David Smith. Okay. By the way, thank you to those who are here from the Boards of Health today. We really appreciate it. We know you're volunteers in that position, and lending your expertise is very helpful to us.
And I would also like to recognize the efforts that were put forth. We had a meeting with the Board of Health on Wednesday, and by Friday, David Smith was, Friday this morning, he was able to turn around some metrics. So I'm deeply appreciative of the collaboration and the time-sensitive work to get these metrics to the committee.
I will just point out quickly, I know there was discussion, Dana, about whether it was using the hundred thousand or the thousand. The towns surrounding us, the contiguous towns and many municipalities in Essex County are significantly larger than Hamilton and Wenham. And so I know there was discussion about that. Is it possible that there is a typo in the rush to press? Absolutely. So I would be happy to look at what we're talking about here.
Yeah. And I guess maybe I shouldn't have, I actually should just ask for explanation on that to make sure that I understand these metrics on the external metrics.
Yeah. Looking here, right here, where it says Essex County?
Correct. So it says that right at the top, there Essex County fourteen-day average of new cases equals sixty-three, and the trend to study prevalence of cases equals twenty-two-point-four per thousand.
Which would be two-point-two-four, or two and twenty-four-hundredths per hundred thousand.
I just, is that accurate?
I thought it was off, too.
Because when I read, because, and also, so to the next step down where Hamilton-Wenham for cases over the past fourteen days says prevalence of cases four-point-six per thousand. I mean, in Hamilton-Wenham, if we had four-point-six per thousand...
We'd have almost twenty-four cases if that metric was correct.
Correct. That was why I was...
I have many similar questions about consistency of terms here.
And I, you know, I'm certainly not a public health expert, but I have been, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the other metrics from other places, it's actually difficult to weed through because they are often used that hundred thousand, and which is hard to get your head around. But so that's why I asked it that way, but it may be something different. I just wondered if those, if you think that those, these numerical metrics as of this moment or as of August twelfth, are these accurate, if we're...
So I think, Mary Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe David had initially prepared this document. Is that right?
It was a collaborative effort, yes.
Okay. I only ask that because I think in terms of the accuracy of the numbers. So I commented on other components, but in terms of the numbers, I, you know, I feel like David, I mean, he's been working so hard on all of this, so I feel like I don't want to speak for him. I almost wish that he were on, or if we could reach out to him with respect to those numbers.
Can I, I also have another, which I suspect you guys are going to be able to answer, which is I didn't really fully understand the Leichert metric.
Yeah.
So maybe, I don't know if that's helpful, if someone could explain that to me while...
Can you show which part?
It's on, it's on, it actually, it actually looks to me like it's listed twice.
It has to do with the compliance.
With the compliance. All right. It's at the bottom of page thirty-two.
Right there.
I just, I actually just didn't really understand. I was hoping someone could explain the percentages, so it's like...
So I can tell you, you know, this was, to be completely transparent, this was like between seven and nine AM this morning collaboratively working, because we recognized, we really wanted to have internal metrics as well as external metrics. We looked at a number of good plans, one particularly from the state of Minnesota, that was not just looking at, you know, the metric that we have from the state is just looking at case numbers and percent, not, I think it's just straight-up case numbers, not even percent positivity. And we felt strongly that some internal metrics would be important, such as what is the capacity of the schools within the district to be prepared in terms of the environment, in terms of sustaining the environment, in terms of disinfection, things like that. But additionally, what is the capacity within the school's population, both adults and students, to be in compliance with mitigation strategies? And if, you know, we are finding, I'm not going to name-call any other states, but if you look at other, you know, communities that have very poor compliance in their schools, if we find we open up and there's poor compliance, that in and of itself is an important metric, let alone what the current infection rate is. So the Leichert scale is an attempt to classify, because we recognize that we needed to have some way to quantify it. We can't just say, what's the, you know, what's the compliance rate? So that is a rough initial attempt that could certainly be reworked, but a rough attempt as to how to go about quantifying what the compliance is with mitigation strategies.
Nurse Ting, would the teachers be responsible for monitoring, I guess, and documenting this to get the percentage?
So in the plan there, it suggests that initially, teachers who are not in teaching duties initially, or staff who are not in the classroom teaching, but certainly teachers within the classroom, oh, Dr. Ting has joined us, so he might be able to speak to it as Staff could certainly, classroom teachers could also report, you know, how often they are having to deal with... Staff could certainly, classroom teachers could also report, you know, how often they are having to deal with face covering issues, or how difficult is it to get children to comply with hand washing?
Physical testing.
I think those are the parameters though, that would need to be established here in terms of how often. Are, are we monitoring this? How, you know, who is monitoring it? How often is being reported to a centralized place? And what is this change? What, at what point do we respond and, and, you know, consider taking action? So I think this, this is certainly a starting point, but it, in order to sort of serve as a benchmark, but there are additional parameters that we would have to set here.
Well, Dr. Perez, you're getting into what my question was about this particular scale is, you know, on this five quart, five part threshold, at what level do we say we're going to have a problem if we're only good or only fair? I mean, do we, in order for us to sort of remain in that green space or yellow space, do we have to be at a four or five? And if we drop below that, is it, you know, is there any notion of like a one day anomaly if it's a really hot day? I'm just thinking about the transmission and when we know and, you know, we might have less compliance on a crazy hot day than we might on a colder day. So I do think, I think I would love to have a little more guidance around duration of non-compliance and also what's our threshold for saying, wow, our kids are not complying as much as we need them to.
Can I just jump in here? So I personally have like some issues with this part of the plan myself. Is this necessary to be submitted, Mary Beth? I'm sorry.
No, we do not need to include this in the plan. We were trying to put as much information in one location for folks, but we could certainly take this out at, and as a, you know, I'm sure will continue to evolve. The other thing that we could do is link to an ongoing document that's constantly updated. But in terms of actually including it in the plan, it is not necessary to do so.
Okay, so, all right, so go ahead. Sorry, I interrupted the question part, so sorry. Go ahead, Anna.
Okay, can you go back up again, Mary Beth, to page thirty as well? I am also struggling, I think, in a way that Dana is a bit. And it might just be a formatting thing because it's in prose as opposed to a chart. So I acknowledge that it might be just how my brain is processing, but when I'm looking at this, in addition to the, the sort of inconsistency of per thousand versus per, per hundred thousand, like for example, in the yellow part of hybrids, so yellow hybrid, Hamilton Wenham fourteen day average of daily new cases between point five and one, but there's no, there's no, there's no, what's the word I'm looking for? Does, does that mean per thousand? Because if you look at some of the other numbers above, under the starting points, it says fourteen day average of new cases equals point three per thousand and trend equals increasing. Just from a, help me out, Michelle, what's the name, the, the, when you identify the, oh, the unit count, the unit measure. I'm struggling with the fact that sometimes we say per thousand and sometimes we don't. And then they would be helpful for me to see a chart in some way. The other question I have, where it says adjoining towns at the top, and I, I think the towns we've chosen to select are spot on, because I think we all know Essex County includes some spots that we have some interaction with, but not as much as these other adjoining towns. So at the top, it says adjoining towns, Manchester Essex of Chicago, a fourteen day average of new cases equals thirty-two and trend equals steady. But then later, under adjoining towns, if that thirty-two isn't a consistent unit measure, we would be well past the red, which says fourteen day average of new cases is greater than eight per hundred thousand. So I'm really confused. If we're at thirty-two per thousand, then there's no way we can open school of any kind. So I have, I'm confused and concerned about that. And then there's a couple other metrics that are included in some of the models, but not others. So for example, the hospitalization rate is included in the green, but is not included in the yellow. I'm sorry, it, the hospitalization, no, maybe that's not true. It's there. I, I, this, it's, it's kind of all over the place, right? It's, it's, it's hard to see exactly where we are or where we need to be.
It was written, written and quickly read.
Yeah, so it's hard for me to make a determination though about what it's saying because I'm having a hard time parsing out what's accurate today. If that makes sense.
Dana? So, and then if I'm gonna scroll down so I can see other people to see if they want to speak.
So the, hey, it's Andrew Ting. Do you want me to answer the question about the fourteen day average? So the fourteen day average for the adjoining towns is a total of thirty-two. The one thing you'd have to do, you need to calculate the total number of population in Manchester Essex, Ipswich, Southfield, Davis, Beverly, to give you the denominator. We just didn't have all the numbers to write the, because again, most of the data comes from the M DPH dashboard, which gives you fourteen day numbers. So then we looked at it and then, so the dashboard gives you the fourteen day average per hundred thousand, which obviously you can normalize to per thousand if you needed to, because it's just a mathematical equation at that point. But yeah, you, if, if I looked at all the websites and look at the population of all those adjacent towns, I could tell you that that's thirty-two over whatever that population is, which is gonna be less than four per hundred thousand. I know that already. Okay, there's probably three, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand people in those, you know, towns altogether, or at least a hundred thousand. So or two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand, I don't, I'd have to look at it. But we picked that, we picked a number that would be safe to use. I know the hospitalization was a, was added to this metric initially, and we actually had internal discussion. I feel like for, for the school committee, that it's not as important it is for the Boards of Health. I think the Boards of Health are gonna be the ones who are watching both the Essex County rates, the hospital rates and surge rates, what's going on with the state, because it gives an overall assessment of what is going on in our, in our region and the state as a whole and watching those trends. So I don't think that that is necessarily important for the school committee, but I think the Boards of Health will be monitoring that. And then if those numbers seem to climb indirectly, it may have an effect on the school committee decision of what to do. And we would inform, we would be obviously in contact with the school committee on a regular basis about, you know, the school district is doing well, but our surrounding outside of us is getting higher and higher and higher. What should we, you know, again, what's driving that is gonna have to be looked at, whether it's certain areas of the county that are driving those numbers, or if it's really encroaching and getting closer and closer, where we start to see the adjacent town numbers start to rise, that may be a, at least a factor in deciding how we should continue with the current school trend. So we're gonna, you know, again, we're gonna clean up these numbers, but we at least think that the, the metrics themselves, and we'll make sure that they're, that they're easily relatable to, whether we just use a one fourteen day average or the percent increase so that you could understand it. But again, we needed to pick some numbers that were, were reportable on a regular basis by the state, that we could then trend over time and that are easily reportable in a way that both community citizens of both Hamilton Wenham can understand them and, as well as, as you guys on the school committee and the superintendent can understand. Hopefully that makes sense.
Can, can we give Stacy a chance to ask her question?
I actually, thank you, Andrew, for clarifying that. I know we've had a lot of last minute information from the Board of Health and I trust your guidance in trying to figure this all out. And I just think, I guess it's, if we can just agree on the format and then, you know, we can clean up the discrepancies, as Andrew said later, that I would be okay with that, because I understand that they're trying to pull all this information for us and, but we're, and we're trusting what Board of Health. I think if we can agree that this format works for us, just clean up the discrepancies.
No, I, I, yeah, so what you're saying, Stacy, is we should still stay with the green, yellow, red, but within what's in green, yellow, red, maybe we might want it to be slightly different, changed, and that we want it to somehow be normalized. Is that what you're saying?
Nor, it's, there's discrepancies, whether it's a hundred thousand or it's a thousand. So it's just to clean up, because I know the effort was there, but you know, it happens in last minute when you're trying to put something together, there's gonna be last minute discrepancies. Like, I mean, you mean to type, as you're typing fast, you can mean a hundred thousand, but you typed in a thousand or ten thousand and it happens. And I'm fine, I like this format. If we can agree to the format and then just to clean up the discrepancies within these numerics.
Peter?
Yes, thank you. I am, one of my questions was answered, who compiled this, this matrix? I am very happy to see that we are, we acknowledge that we do not live in a bubble here, here in Hamilton Wenham, and that we were looking outside of our towns. We're looking inside of our towns. We're looking at compliance. I guess my question is, two questions. How did we land on these numbers? Are they conservative? Are they liberal? Are they, are they, I guess lax, or are they very conservative? How did we fall on these numbers? And how are we going to use these numbers as a committee?
And if you could add into that, how often are these numbers given to you?
Right. And do we have to meet as a committee or how, yeah?
We'll talk about how that's gonna happen in a minute.
Right. So how did we land on these numbers?
I, I can't speak right now, or I won't speak for the, for the boards as to how the number, how we arrived at the numbers since I played a more distant role on that. But what I would encourage us to consider is to be more conservative. I think when we met on Wednesday, an argument that I was trying to make is that I really would like to see us continue to be more proactive as opposed to reactive. I think that's important. That's how we're maintaining our community safe. So that's where we're gonna need to take just a lot of caution and looking and whatever number we arrive at is going to be, I feel truly arbitrary. It's gonna be based on just how much risk are we willing to tolerate? So that's my personal belief, but I do wanna, I think it's important to hear from other members of the board.
And, Mary Beth, where are you? Andrew and Mary Beth, that's you.
So hi, it's Andrew. So the, the numbers are ones that the state has been using since the beginning of the, this COVID pandemic. So we have a lot of data all the way back to early March with case counts and the number of new cases and positivity rates. So we have a lot of history to work with. Also, those numbers are presented on a daily basis and then a fourteen day average that smoothes out some of the irregularities when you have cases. So those were chosen because from an epidemiologic standpoint, those were the best ways of monitoring and measuring sort of the overall infectivity component of COVID. So i- it's hard for us as towns to get as much data to try to pull it ourselves, and so we rely on the state. So that's why those metrics were used versus some other metrics, which would require us to then pull and, and do our own research and those numbers may or may not be accurate because we may not get the full, the full picture. So that's why those are chosen, especially because we have so much data. We now have four, almost five months of data from the state, so we can look at trends and see what happened early on and use them potentially as a comparison if we want to say, hey, we see some numbers going up, let's look backwards at the time when those weren't up. What was going on? We were in phase one, lockdown, right? Numbers were low. We were in phase three, part one, numbers are starting to go up. Governor puts a halt on certain things, numbers start to go down. So we like to see the trends between what happens between regulations and, and cases. There is gonna be a lag, obviously, behind the two, but I think it is helpful to use those metrics as they're readily available, easily definable, in that we can just, we, we don't have to put as much research work to pull the data. So it makes sense?
Yes, but I guess I still, I know it's in line with the state, what the state is recommending, but is this, is this a conservative number? Can we be more conservative?
So are you referring to actually the, the, the numbers we picked that determine which mode we transfer into? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, those numbers were, again, those were sort of arbitrarily fixed on where we are currently and trying to take in consideration what Desi had put out, which was a single number, right? They had presented one matrix as a red, yellow, green, right, mode. And so those could actually be, I mean, again, anytime you move a threshold line, you, you affect some, someone and something. So it's just a question of determining, like, for example, Dr. Perez, if we're very conservative, we push that number down. But that may make us right now, starting at time zero, almost at the edge of going to remote. You know, for example, if I push that, that, that number down, or we could push it much higher, where we, where technically we could be all in person, although we probably will not be that way. If, then my numbers may suggest that and gives us more wiggle room to be in room, to be in hybrid mode. So I think that that still needs to be probably more looked at and to get a more accurate number. But regardless of whatever we do, it's gonna be slightly arbitrary in the sense of we don't know what we don't know in terms of, we have no historical data in which any time has a school district done this and determine what's a good level in which we change modes of learning from in-person, hybrid or full remote. So I agree with you, that number may, may not be the final number, but the metrics are good, are very good and accurate.
And one thing to keep in mind is that the information put out by the D E S E has a big little footnote that says information for regional school districts will be coming out next week. So, you know, that made, that information isn't done yet. I would disagree with Anna on that we've picked the right towns. I feel like we should pick the towns from where our students come and we should be including Salem and Gloucester in those, because I know we have quite a few students that come from there, and I believe we also have students from PBD. So that would be my rationale, that we should focus in on who our students are and we should use the towns from where they come. So.
The towns where our teachers and staff live as well.
I think that gets big because it starts getting out of state and then they don't have the ability to get that and, you know, like Mary Beth doesn't live in the state and we're not gonna be able to get numbers from her town, but, but anything that's in the state is accessible to our Board of Health. Yeah.
No, I was just gonna say, to your point though, Michelle, the number of students from Gloucester and PBD are smaller and Salem, whatever, are smaller. So does that really, does that factor as much into it? Yes, I know they're coming from, you know, towns that, and cities that may have higher infection rates. I, I don't know. I think the, maybe the professionals can chime in on this.
I think these are things that, why these, these kind of metrics that we have here in terms of what contributes to, you know, maintaining in person versus transitioning to hybrid. That's going to be fluid. And I think it's important to take into consideration. So I'm in agreement with Michelle. I think we do need to see in a broad area, especially those towns that tend to be more dense, those cities that tend to be more dense, there's gonna be a higher risk for transmission of the virus. So these are things that we should take into account. How much is it gonna play into this metric? I think it just makes it that much more messy. And also in terms of infectivity and, and cases that are happening within our own towns. I mean, I'd be more concerned, frankly, if we had one or two cases happening within one school over a short period, period of time, as opposed to one case, two cases that happen, you know, in our town in general. So I think for that reason, these benchmarks are going to be helpful, but they are arbitrary and we're just gonna have to be kind of keeping a close eye.
Yeah.
Would be my recommendation.
So I think playing off of what Giselle, I'm sorry, Dr. Perez just said, that, and from what I'm hearing, like, we're not really satisfied exactly, and there's a little bit more to hammer out. And even after school starts, we may decide, you know what, we kind of wanna use something a little different. How would people feel about not including this in our plan and then refining it over the course of the next two weeks? Go.
Well, what's the harm in including it? It's not, it's, it's not a, the, the state's not gonna hold us to these numbers. We can modify it afterwards, correct?
Dana's gonna go and then we'll talk about that.
So, and maybe you're gonna say the same thing to me that you just said to Peter that we have to do it later, but I, I think what Stacy said makes a lot of sense, which is that we're, that in general, this feels like a, I'm not sure what you were, she used, but framework, that this, these metrics feel like a good framework and that they need some adjusting and that has. And that they need some adjusting and that has, so I'm comfortable with that. I guess what I'm. Are we going to vote or are we going to agree to form this, the the advisory team? Because if we do, then this, these metrics would be part of that team's purview, I guess, right? It would be.
That team would be advising Mary Beth.
Correct.
And then Mary Beth could.
And that team would be.
Then can make a recommendation to us or we can.
I guess, I guess in terms of this is that does this need to be? It might not need to be fully fleshed out in the plan. It could, and maybe that's just what Peter is saying too. I don't know. Does it need to be fully fleshed out in the plan? Or could we just say something to the effect of what Stacy said that like, we're comfortable with the general frameworks of the metrics, knowing that as time goes on, the metrics will evolve?
Dana, if I could just call your attention, the committee's attention to the the language that that begins the metrics, right? It says, this document provides a framework based on our current knowledge and is subject to change based on new scientific evidence and medical guidance. It indicates that this is a fluid situation. So the the introduction to these metrics is designed to say, I think what I hear a lot of board members saying and Board of Health members saying is that this is going to evolve, right? And as we get new information and as as we continue to unpack this and learn, our metrics may evolve. But it it gives the the community some sense of, one, that we're, we're looking at objective measures when we're making this decision and to give some sense of where the community is right now related to the virus.
Yeah. And and that our metric is slightly more complex than what the DESI said because we feel that measuring things like trends or more than just our small little towns, because it's no fence around them, might be important. So I think we're making a value statement about trying to be a little more sophisticated. Anna?
So a couple of questions. I think to pick off, pick back up what the good point that Stacy was making. I think actually it's not so much that the framework is perfect. I think the content seems good. I do have a concern with including something in a formal plan that we're voting on that has these unit measuring inconsistencies, like this feels like a really awesome rough draft. And I think we all see that, but I'm concerned about it being a representation. So part of me feels like I would like to see the content flushed out. And for me, the formatting does matter. I think the formatting is hard to see. So that's, that's one observation. So I guess I would support keeping it in, but with added language that this, I mean, it's just, I I maybe I'm very, I'm a stickler for accuracy. I have a hard time feeling good about putting in something that has inconsistent unit measures. Like, that just feels weird to me.
That's professional. That's coming from your professional work that, you know, when the, when there's errors, you don't get your brand. So, yeah.
Right. So that makes me concerned. The other thing that I think is really important that I definitely don't want to lose is the trend. You know, the increasing and seeing that. I want to pick back up on something you said, Michelle, which is true. I think there's sort of two things happening with the adjoining towns. I do agree we should include students for sure. I think my thought about adjoining towns is that this is not just about our students. It's also about their parents. It's also about people who live in the town but don't have kids in the school. And if you sort of look at the most common places where we go, for example, like, you know, I'm just thinking in terms of like shopping, right? And exposure and what might be going, coming from our community. And then we all, you know, go to Danvers to go grocery shopping, or we go to Beverly or Gloucester. And I I would like to see a thoughtfulness about not just limiting our view to the students, but recognizing that where we go out to eat, where we go to shop, where we might work. You know, I'm a little concerned too that we do have a lot of people that live here but still work even in the city. It's hard to know what percentage of people it is, but the inflow outflow of people is really hard. So I agree, it gets really messy. But that to me is causing trouble to fix it too much on just the schools. So I personally would like to see, you know, a little more accuracy in our formatting. I think the rough content is really good, but I'm uneasy with the content. And I'm just literally having a hard time seeing where we are. And the last question is, I don't know, Nurse Ting or Dr. Ting or Dr. Perez, where were we on March thirteenth when we shut down? Does anybody know relative to these metrics?
We were a lot more ignorant about the data, about how things happen. So we have gotten a lot of information since then, but do you know the numbers by chance? Someone?
I don't know if Mary Beth or Dr. Ting know the numbers.
Yeah, hang on. I have a, I did a spreadsheet. I just got to find it here.
Oh, good, because Anna loves a good spreadsheet.
I I do. I hate to be a stickler for accuracy, but I take a lot of pride in our documentation. So when I see things that have typos or things, you know, I I call it document vanity. I suffer from document vanity. I want it to look accurate and good.
I would, I. If I could, I'd be here too. And and I know Anna's been really helpful in trying to be sure that everything in here is is presented in a very professional manner. We are in a situation where this this report has to be submitted to the state today. So making major edits at this point is not going to be possible. And we also want to be able to send the report out to families and teachers so that we can collect good information from them in terms of their intent in the, for the fall. So that's just another piece that people should bear in mind regarding this this conversation.
And just one thing, Dr. Ting did say earlier that the past four months information gathered has helped us to make decisions from where we are today. So I think that's what we have to hang on to, not to where we were on March twelfth, but where we are today.
Exactly, exactly, Michelle.
Total ignorance back then. And did you find it, Andrew? Or is it too hard to get to?
Yeah, just give me a second.
That's okay. That's okay. I'm just, you know, it's just, again, just sort of looking at trends. But I agree with Stacy and Michelle that to some degree it doesn't matter, but.
We were early on, though. Just to answer, I don't have the numbers, but you know, back in March, I remember actually our our meetings back then, we were right at the cusp of the rise. So we were proactive in that sense. And actually, I think we were one of the first few schools that closed before the announcement was made across. So, but I don't know the number.
So one of the things, it sounds like Superintendent Banyos, you've got to get a doctorate so that we can call you that. Um, so what can, can we just, at the top of that, right? You have something in there that's like it's preliminary or something like that already.
Yep. So let me.
Just put bigger letters that said draft. Would that satisfy what we're talking about?
Or how about a place, just say it's a placeholder and then we can put it in afterwards when it's refined. Just say, put a placeholder in there.
Yeah, because it is a little weird to release it to the community where it's really not quite hammered out yet.
Well, I mean, listen, we're a school board. Let's think about it from a school perspective, right? What will we give this an A paper if it was handed into us, right?
No.
All right. So.
Might get a C. And guess what C gets you? A degree.
Well, I I think, I think in some cases, small typos, you know, we, I I'm not overly hung up on this, but this is kind of important. So I think, but I think in terms of like moving past this immediate part of the conversation, I think we can all agree. It sounds like we all kind of like the basic data being compiled. We have a little bit of variance about how big of a net forecast, what does it mean? What are the thresholds? You know, I think that's really the the next part of the question is how do we feel about the starting position, which I think really is the crucial question. I I I think it sounds like working together with, you know, Dr. Perez and David and, you know, our amazing Board of Health people. I have no doubt we can produce a really slick living chart or something that people could very easily refer to. I I don't think we could do it before Mary Beth has to put it in today, though.
But I know we could. We should just make it a placeholder and then we should move on from there, just agree to make it as a placeholder. And then we can agree and really refine it after this, you know, what we're talking about. Because this is really just, I know it's a big piece, but it's a small piece too, when we're trying to think of everything else. And we're now over two and a half hours in this meeting. And we also met three hours on Monday and we had a board meeting on Wednesday, a Board of Health meeting that we listened. So I'm just, I know we have a lot to think about and a big decision to make.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of school committees were meeting till one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock. So we had nothing, they got nothing. Skip Peter and then we're going to try and move on.
I just wanted to support Anna and that I think a clearer formatting would be helpful, like a clear metric, you know, a matrix. So you can look at it, see where we're at. I also want to advocate that we should make sure that this is as conservative as reasonably possible. But not also be, I want to make sure we're not locked into this as well, that we don't, that it's just an advisory number and that we still have the power to decide when we're in school, when we're hybrid, and when we're remote.
Means you're dead.
I'm sorry?
Euro risk means you're dead. That's the only way to avoid risk is to be dead. Even getting out of bed has some risks. So, yeah, we need to find that line. Okay. So what I'm hearing from the committee is either we would include it as a draft or we would make it a placeholder. So Dana, you get to decide on what kind of a motion you want to make so that we can get to consensus. And then if your motion fails, then we'll do the opposite.
Michelle, I, so I I guess draft or placeholder, I mean, I, is there a?
Are we going to leave the information all in it and just write draft over the top? Or are we going to just take all the information out and we're going to put, you know, forthcoming?
Can we take a temperature check and just see who wants to play?
Temperature check first, Dana?
Uh, sure.
Okay, temperature check. If you want to leave the information in, but just have it say like draft, a little bit of a hand, see how you are. Okay, if you want to just take it out and we'll put to be determined, raise your hand. Give us a motion that maybe you think goes with the temperature.
Okay, I move that we, that the Hamilton Regional School Committee creates a placeholder for the metrics regarding COVID response.
Second. Second by Stacy. Does anybody want to discuss that anymore?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
You, is there, Mary Beth, do you see a concern regarding, any concern regarding this placeholder in terms of compliance with providing the, what the state is requiring?
This piece is something that we had added into our plan based on conversations that we had been having, but it is not required by the state in order to submit the plan.
David?
So and and I mean, even if it was, if we submit this plan and they say, oh, we need more information here, Monday we'll have more information. I just wanted to say in case what I said sort of came off a little bit rude, that I'm really appreciative of all the work Board of Health are, is doing and just, I know probably nobody wants that document to be more perfect than they do. So, you know, I was just coming from that perspective, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Peter?
Mine was just continuing what David said. That's what I wanted to say was thank you to the Board of Health members. You can see that this was a tremendous amount of thought gone into this, attention to detail. So I greatly appreciate their work.
All right, we are ready.
Can I ask, I have a question about Dana's motion again. When you say create a placeholder, does that mean we're going to take out what's here and write a little word that says additional health metrics will be, are in development in consultation with the Hamilton and Boards of Health or something like that? I just want to be really close to clear about the words Mary Beth has to take out and put in.
It means she's going to erase everything that's there and she's going to put in whatever word she feels needs that.
Our placeholder.
Fear it. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll say something like, you know, metrics are under development and be as as soon as they're available.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to be clear. Thanks.
All right, so we're going to vote and we'll start with David.
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Well, Bailey, yes. Okay, so that probably puts us in an action item. In the future, we may have a meeting in the future. But if the Boards of Health people could stay just for a little second longer as we discuss where we are, so that maybe that will help inform our decision if we go hybrid or remote for the first whatever number of days of school. In theory, assuming that the numbers stay where we are now, because as spoken at the Board of Health meeting on Wednesday, there's some concerns about slight uptick recently. So. Okay. Mary Beth? Banyos? Do you have, I know this.
I know. It is a, this is an unusual situation, I'm sure, for both myself and the other Mary Beth.
I work with the Mary Beth too, so it's very strange for me here. So do you have a slide that talks about? Now I think we're back to, do we want to vote the plan or do we want to vote?
Yeah, so if that, let me pull the slide deck back out and see if we can kind of reframe where we are.
Yeah.
Give me just a moment.
Because it's like, do we want to vote the plan and then vote the mode? Or do we want to vote them together? Or do we want to vote the mode and then the plan? That kind of seems backwards, but.
My only concern is that the mode is written in the plan. So if we end up changing it, then.
Yeah, Dana's.
I'm not sure what that means.
Go Dana.
I I I don't think the plan, the mode is really written in the plan because the plan, in the plan, maybe we're discussing the plan now, but in the plan, it 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 states that we would be able to, using these metrics and use it or moving.
I I'm not sure I agree because it says, you know, it says, this is the option we plan to employ to begin the school year.
Right, but my under, and well, anyone can speak to that, whatever.
I think we should choose, I think we should choose the mode before we vote the plan. But I also think there's a difference between this, the conversation about other elements of the plan. I I feel like, I feel like David has other concerns about the plan itself. I have a question about a line about masking in the plan. So maybe we should hammer out anything else with the plan. And then we can really focus on this question because that really is the crucial question.
We're going to plan done and then we'll vote on the plan. So we're going to go with, like I'm not timing people now, be judicious with the words you use and the time you use and just lay it on the table because we've got to get this done. So, David, did you want to go first or do you want to go later?
Um, I don't, I don't mind starting. In, you know, I I also don't, I I just want to sort of recap that, you know, I I want to get this done today, don't get me wrong. But, you know, to say that we need to get this done because DESI, you know,
Right.
if it didn't make it till next week, it, you know, they're not shutting down our school and they're not taking us over. So, you know, let's, let's make sure we're getting this right. You know, and that being said, I just want to reiterate what I was saying earlier that I don't think this is a perfect plan. I don't think this is the best plan. But I don't, I'm sorry, I don't want to say I don't think this is the best plan. I think this is the best plan we have in front of us. And I think that's really key right now. It is, much as I don't like about it, and I've heard from very many community members that they don't like about it. You know, they don't, there's no, we don't have another option, right? We need to get kids into school. Excuse me. You know, that being said, you know, everyone has little plans about what fits for them individually, right? And and, you know, then you have to take into account that we have eighteen hundred individuals, you know, within our district that this cuts for. So every time a group of emails comes in that's all leaning one way, I know I could speak for the rest of the committee to say that we have an equal amount of emails with the exact opposite opinion of what you're coming in. And, you know, it's, we're left in this really difficult place to make this decision for everybody within our district, students and staff, right? I could say that, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm ninety-nine percent sure, but we're not a hundred percent sure in in our family on what we're going to do personally, you know, come the beginning of September. So, you know, thinking about doing that and then thinking about the task that sort of lays on me and the other six members of this board in making this decision is sort of beyond the realm of, you know, expectation that most people could sort of can really fathom. I, and I just want to make that clear. You know, I I I think this is, it's a tough position. I have very personal views on how I think we should be doing things, but, you know, as a whole, you know, I think it's a well-thought-out plan to the. well-thought-out plan to the point, uh, you know, to the point that it is. I think that it still needs a lot of improvement, and I actually enjoy, um, have been r- really happy with the amount of response I've gotten from Superintendent Banyos uh, and the rest of the team, um, as, you know, the past week and a half or so, when I've been, I know have not been very blunt and not nice at times about, you know, what I expect and, you know, improvements that need to be made, and you've done it. Um, so I have a lot of faith in this team in creating, in, in continuing to make this the best plan we can, right? And that's, it's a rolling plan. Um, you know, I, I, I'll, I'll just say again, you know, I, I'm not in love with it, but I don't know that you could have given me something that would fall in love. I, I don't know if it really exists, right? Um, I, I think it hits a lot of the things that needs to be, that needs to be done, and, um, you know, I, 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 I think I can, I, I, I think I'm leaning to, towards supporting it because of that, right? In, in that, it, just to say no and not have a better op- and not give, be able to give you a better option, would just not be in the best interest of this district. So, I, that's, you know, what, really what I wanted to get off my chest.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Um, Stacy?
I think, you know, it's gonna be hard either decision. Uh, I think, you know, the, I'm still concerned about this, uh, you know, you know, what we have to deal with is the social and emotional needs of kids. Um, they haven't been, you know, at a school mode. I know that a lot of kids have had a lot of issues doing remote. Some kids need remote and I totally understand that, and I, I think it's really, um, what am I trying to say is, you know, I'm feeling, I, you know, I'm really leaving, I'd like to have in-person personally. Uh, I've just seen a lot of kids, I've seen how remote, you know, is not met with social and emotional needs and the mental wellbeing of kids. And so my, I'm really concerned, you know, about that unless, you know, kids really need that remote.
Okay, Michelle Horgan?
Um, we were elected to represent the people in our towns, um, and the people that voted us in also support our school and pay the taxes. Superintendent Banyos did a diligent job of researching and asking for results. Um, and we heard them. They, they spoke to us loudly. Um, so we need to listen to that. Um, we also have to take into consideration that childcare from a parent's perspective and childcare from a teacher-staff perspective should not come into play here. We have to consider our children's education and make sure that we put forth the best uh, possible education that we can give our kids in a pandemic. Also take into consideration safety. And again, I think, let me backtrack. And Michelle spoke to this, um, saying that zero percent of risk is being dead. In this time that we're living in, unless you get out of bed and leave your house, you have zero risk. We live in a scary time right now. There's risks involved in everyone's job and everyone's life. Um, and I think, again, Superintendent Banyos and the team and Tom have done a good job trying to keep us safe, including the Board of Health people. There's a hundred and one things that we can still be looking at. Um, but I think what Principal Clifford said last week, we have to give the teachers grace. We have to give our, our administrators grace. We have to give everybody an opportunity to continue to grow and continue to do the best, um, that we can for our students, because they are suffering. Um, two days ago, a little second grader came to jostle some stuff at a court and unsolicited, she said, I don't care if I have to wear a mask six hours a day. I want to be in school. Um, I want to be doing projects. I've got a senior, my youngest, who's missing out on huge milestones. And I know safety is the number one thing, but I think we are doing a good job. And, and we need to do what's best for our students.
Okay, um, Anna?
Thanks, Michelle. Um, you know, I think, I also really liked what Principal Clifford said about giving teachers grace. I think that was a really winner of a line, so Jen Clifford, bravo to you. Um, the thing I keep thinking about is that this plan is really at the beginning of our school year. It's not the end. And I feel like we could spend all day uh, churning on, are we a four and one hybrid? Are we a two, three hopscotch? Are we A and P? I mean, I think, and talking to everyone, everyone has an opinion and a, a, a perspective and an experience, and the reality is like, we could talk about that forever. So, the way I feel right now is that operationally, you know, our charge from the voters is overall management and operational viability, financial viability. And I think where we've landed, we have a perfectly viable plan. It seems financially viable, and it, it's one version of a hybrid that works, and our staff thinks that it works. Now, that said, I have a feeling that once we get it rolling, our incredible teachers will take something good about this plan. I, I have this concept in my life where I think, let's take something good and let's make it great. And I think what our teachers will do, when we actually take us out of this pressure cooker of a vapt room to decide, where, remember, this plan was put together over a really intense week in the summer. It was an awesome design team, but it wasn't actually the whole teaching staff. And this is not meant to be a dig at the design team, because I know some people on that design team, I know they're brilliant. But I also know that a brain trust works better with more brains. So I have a feeling if we just get started and give our teachers a chance to make it great, I know that they'll pivot and figure it out. And someone is gonna say, wow, this is working, this isn't working. Oh, I don't know. I mean, so to me, the plan is the beginning and not the end. I think that's really, like, functionally, that's an important thing to say. Um, I think for me, in terms of the mode we start in, I think it's really important to remember that everyone's risk tolerances are very, very different, and they're all equally valid. And part of the reason I think we need to be thoughtful here is that we shouldn't impose our personal risk, uh, risk tolerances on the whole community. So what Michelle Horgan said really speaks to me a bit, because, you know, I might be in one place, but we were elected by the whole community. And what I've heard is that depending on who you are, your needs are very different. So I think that this plan is getting to a point where we can have some viability for everyone. And that's good, because I should let my risk tolerance tell Stacy what to do with her children or David what to do with his children or anyone. Like, we all have our own goals. So, but that said, um, so I, I wanted to clarify, I don't want to, I don't want to, I actually like the plan. I, I think I'm good with the plan, to be honest. Um, what I want to do is be mindful of setting ourselves up for success. And the part of the plan that gives me concern is, right now, it's somewhat predicated on wishful thinking and being hopeful. We're hopeful that Tom can fix the HVAC. We're hopeful the teacher's MOU can be granted. We're hopeful that the health metric stays in a good spot. My concern about starting from a position of hope is that if we're wrong, the consequences could be really bad. So I personally would rather start from a position of certainty and caution and give our teachers something to really plan on and give our parents something to plan on. One of the things I've heard resoundingly is, we need to make a decision so that parents can tell their bosses, hey, I'm coming to work or I'm not coming to work. Or parents can say, I'm gonna need childcare five days a week or three days a week. I think we have to give parents something to hold on to, because continuing this cycle of, I don't know what's gonna happen, I think it's gonna drive people bananas. What I would say is to start from a place of caution, and then sort of in line with those health metrics, I would say revisit that in two weeks' time. And I know that, that Masco and many other surrounding districts have sort of started in a cautious position, which isn't to say we're giving up on the whole thing, but to say start slow and give our teachers a chance to make the plan better. And give our health metrics time to flush each other out and not take that away from people. Um, so I'm, I'm nervous about rushing into it, because if we get it wrong, the consequences are really bad. And I'm not sure, I'm not saying I'm not willing to take the risk, because I do agree, like, right now, I'm not really sure we're living, you know? I'm alive. I don't know that I'm living. So I think we have to push forward to something and I don't want to take that away, but I would urge caution. Um, and I also just, from one last operational point, our teachers are incredible, and I've been moved tremendously by hearing the teachers, in some cases, almost begging for caution. And that concerns me, because operationally, just from a viability standpoint, there's a part in the last metrics. The question was, are you able to maintain your current learning model based on staffing? And one of my concerns about, say, we're gonna go in hybrid and something falls apart, one, our parents have no way, no way to plan, and two, if our teachers really aren't willing and we can't make it for them, I hate to pull the rug out on people two days before school starts. You know, I think we should start in the thing we know we can guarantee. We know we can start in a full road option, and I would propose that we revisit that in two weeks. Not two months, not in a semester. I mean, every two weeks, we do a check-in and say, is this still the set, the right place to be? And if it's not, then let's go hybrid, because I don't want to take that away from the people who absolutely want to be hybrid, because I know we have a good remote option. So I would propose we start at caution, and every two weeks, we evaluate. And as soon as we can flip that switch to hybrid, I'm all for it. I, I do not want to impose my risk sentiment on the entire community.
Okay, Dana?
So I just wanted to start by saying that, um, Jen Clifford, I also have written right at the top of my page that same, uh, quote. So I think that was a really powerful thing that you said, um, regarding grace and thinking about, um, I see this plan as exactly, um, as Anna just expressed, the idea that, um, that the plan is a good plan that allows teachers in Hamilton One to take it from good to great. And that we, um, trust that our teachers in Hamilton One really have the capability, um, to do that, and that's the magic, right? Of the Hamilton One of teachers. Um, I wanted to address, um, I guess I, I, my feeling on the mode, um, and I, I didn't really know that we were totally addressing the mode right in the moment, but um, is a difficult one. I, um, e- every email that I read that was pushing towards a fully remote start, every email, I guess I shouldn't say every, I don't know, but we had so many, but nearly every meme email said, I want you to do full remote start until it is safe. And, um, I really hear that, and I also, I mean, it's what we're all talking about, is that what does that mean, until it is safe? And almost everybody used exactly those words. And I did a lot of thinking, and I think I'm saying the same things that other people are saying. Um, but as parents, and I assume that most of those participants there are parents, you know, that idea about what is safe, you have to make judgments every single day as a parent. We make those huge choices. You know, can I climb a tree? Can I ride a skateboard? Can I walk downtown by myself? Can I get in a car with a friend? Can I go to that party? Um, and, you know, we have to, we have to make those decisions for ourselves. And so I guess I am lean- I just, I am really leaning towards accepting this plan in the mode that it's in, partially because, in the hybrid mode that it's currently running, partially because I am listening to the metrics and the potential advisory committee and with the Board of Health and one of us, that we give that group grace also, that that group that we've all said we really trust as we create it, to make good decisions when it's not safe. That they will make a good decision to say, this is the time to switch if we need to into remote. Um, with the full understanding that just like all of those scenarios I just gave for parents, you're never gonna know a hundred percent. You never know. All those, every day, you, you're right most of the time, but you never know, right? Um, so, and I'm, I, it's truly emotional to talk, I'm a little shaky. Um, but, uh, that's where I am right now.
Um, I think I, we haven't heard from Peter and we haven't heard from me. Peter, do you want to go first or second? First you have to unmute to tell us.
Sorry. Stacy wanted to respond to something for Anna. Can, can we let Stacy go first and then I'll use my time?
No, you can go first, Peter, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Uh, no, mine will be much shorter. I guess I need, uh, I just wanted to say as school committee members, we are here to protect our students, our teachers, our other staff. We may differ how we think that protection, uh, needs to be carried out. Um, are we talking now about the plan? Because I, I'd like to see us do two votes. One, is this the plan we're going to submit to Desi? And then two, in what form or what way are we going to uh, have students start on September fourteenth? Are we going to be in-person, vote hybrid? I think we should have two votes, because I, I'm.
We've gone off the rails. I think we were on the rails of are we gonna approve this plan, and somehow we like jumped track. So, so, Peter, thank you for, we're bringing it back to, we're trying to get to, are we, what do we think about this plan?
Uh, okay, I, I just want to be clear. I am in favor of.
You'll get another chance to talk about the other track.
Okay, very good. I just want to be clear that I'm in favor of submitting this plan, but I, I think we need to have some discussion about how we start.
Okay.
We good?
Yeah. I have something I must say, and then if Stacy wants to go, she can go. So, I'm in support of this plan. I, uh, feel that this offers, um, options for everybody. It offers options for people who want their kids to be back in school. It offers options for people who want to be fully remote. Um, we're giving options for people to choose if they want to homeschool. They want to homeschool, we have a fully remote curriculum that they can be fully remote and they can use our curriculum. It offers something for everybody. I believe we're trying to provide the best possible education for everybody based on our input from our community. I really wholeheartedly support the state plan at the elementary school. I really feel like it's gonna be engaging. It's gonna be something kids want, you know, it's not unlike what they already get with like freckle and things like that. So, um, I support that. I feel like, um, our plan is predicated on us meeting some deadlines, and I feel like that might be an issue coming for up, but, um, as far as the plan goes, a hundred percent behind it. Stacy, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, um, I think everybody's speaking from their heart and, you know, I agree with, um, how Dana started with, you know, you know, we're, you know, the grace and, you know, going to be great and just really working towards a plan, and we're all, we all come from different places at the same time. You know, I'm looking at, you know, the back, you know, like, you know, the CDC, American Pediatrics, and even Desi's a conservative group of saying people can go to school. And we, in our district, I know we're comparing to some other areas locally, but, you know, Hamilton Wenham has got a really low rate, um, with the COVID. And I'm hoping it stays that way, because I do know that Gordon College is already back. And I see them all wearing masks. I walked through the area every day with my dogs. And, um, so they are being very cautious, keeping their distance. And I just think that our leadership, Mary Beth, has really put forward a thoughtful plan. And we also, um, as Michelle Horgan said, Dana said, you know, we were elected, um, you know, to also, you know, you know, voice, you know, what, and think about information and not just always do have a personal, you know, even though we have personal opinions on it, we still need to think of what the community wants. And I know we've got, I do want to say that we got a lot of emails from the community, you know, of wanting to have hybrid and how kids were having a hard time with remote. Um, and yes, there are people. And yes, there are people, and this plan, I think, really goes to everybody, you know? Like you said, Michelle, be, since we have two Michelles.
Okay.
Thank you.
I feel like people have their say on the plan, and we're ready to vote the plan. So Dana will take, give us a motion, and then if anybody wants to deliberate on the motion, we all deliberate on the motion. So, Mary Beth, do you have wording?
A potential resolution here, so let me put that up.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the wording works now, because it's not including the other part. I can.
But I, let me.
Ask a question?
Not until the motion. Then you can, no.
I'm sorry, I'll get you the best one.
I saw right before task two, there was something that said language, but.
I can.
Or she can make it up in the, I mean, this isn't one of those, it's not like it's a bond, where if we mess up one word, we're in trouble.
There we go. Just one second.
Okay, so I'm going to take a stab at it with the parentheses there, right?
Sure.
Somebody needs to mute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton One Um Regional School Committee vote to approve the fall reopening plan as present, or as presented with the metrics placeholder inserted, with the understanding that the situation is fluid, and this plan will evolve during the implementation process.
What do you mean about the metrics inserted?
Say it again?
You said something about the metrics being inserted, what, was that?
Oh, I, want me to try again?
You said placeholder.
Without the, okay, gotcha.
And the placeholder being inserted.
Yeah, great, okay.
Okay.
Now I understand, thank you. So the motion is to approve it, as we have discussed, with removing the metrics and putting in the placeholder. Anybody have a question about the motion?
I don't, did we get a second?
No, thank you.
I have a question.
Any question also?
Someone.
Second.
I, was that you, Stacy, who just said that?
That was Michelle Horgan, but I was about to do it, so Michelle Horgan gave a second.
Michelle Horgan gave a second. Now we're going to have Peter, then Anna.
Judge, we're being clear that this is not determining yet how we, you know, what, how we're going to open on the 14th.
That is correct.
Okay, because there needs to be some.
Even if there's a line in the plan currently about that, we're not approving that.
Very good, okay, that's what I want to, because there is a line, all right, thank you.
That was, that was related to my question. My other, you know, small issue, if there's something in the plan that's in conflict with the pending policy, there's a part about masking that does that. Does that matter at this point if we're creating ourselves potential conflict later on? Is it under, is it understood that this plan is really, really close to done, but not pending?
It's fluid and evolving.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, that's, that we need, I think, feel comfortable that this will evolve, right? We, we know things are evolving day to day, week to week. So this is the skeleton of our plan, and we will continue to fine tune it as, as we move along, as new information comes forward, as new policies are adopted. And there's nothing from the state that is signaling to us that what you, what you hand in today is cast in stone forever.
Okay, then I, I'm comfortable with that, as long as I do share Peter's concern. I, I want to separate those two, so, okay.
Okay. Um, I don't see any other hands or anybody waving, now I see Stacy doing that.
So just want to make sure, this plan that's putting forward, because I, I'm now get, now I'm fully confused, I guess, of all the different school levels, Mary Beth, can you just, I'm sorry about this. Before I vote, I just want to make sure each level, what we're voting for.
So what this, this plan is doing is saying that when we, we, we have in place a plan for each of the different modes of learning, for in-person, for hybrid, and for remote. It also lays out our plan for vulnerable learners. It lays out a plan for those families that need fully remote, and it lays out the fact that we have thought through safety requirements. That's what you're voting on. There is a line in there that, you know, the tendency is this, but it, the, as indicated, that can be removed if you want, and just have it, the next conversation be about what modality we want to signal to the community to plan for, for September 14th.
Okay, so this is basically, it's a hybrid plan for each level, and it has different modalities in it, is that correct?
So the, yeah, the plan has, not only did we have to figure out how would you handle each modality of learning, you also had to look at what will that look like for elementary? What will that look like for middle school? What will that look like for high school? So you see all that level of detail in the plan. The state is also very explicit that we need to provide, what are we going to do for those families that need fully remote? What do we need to do for those vulnerable learners? What are your safety, safety plans so that you meet the guidelines put forth through the state? This plan does all those things.
Okay, thank you. And just, so, nothing changed on the high school, because I know Eric Tracy's not on this.
Right, the, the high school has not changed since the first time you saw the plan.
I don't 100% understand on the high school plan, on the, on the hybrid days, are the kids watching into Zoom with the opposite cohort? And I didn't really, and if they're fully remote, are they like watching in with the cohorts Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? I didn't completely understand that, but.
Yes, thank you, Michelle Bailey, I had that question too, that's why I couldn't ask it.
And what happened if you were fully remote, and what happened on remote days in the hybrid model? So that wasn't clear.
Okay, I, I can do my best.
Vote for it, but I think that, well, my comment is going to be later, that, that we need to have, and you know this, Mary Beth, a huge orientation for every single parent, because whatever, like if you've had 15 kids go through the school system, you never have had a kid go through the way the school system's going to be, so you still need to go to this one.
Right, so one of the things that I will talk to Principal Tracy about is getting more information out regarding what is happening during that, the, the remote time in person and for fully in person. I know he has more detail than is in the plan. And again, that continues to evolve, but I will be particularly mindful of providing both the committee and the community that information.
It's even just like, I'm not sure if a parent knows, guess what? You need a really good backpack, no lockers. You know what I mean? Like, you need to buy a 32-ounce water bottle, because there's going to be no water fountains. There's a lot of things that are different, that are minor, but will become major pinch points for them later on. Okay, so I think there was a motion about accepting the plan as written, except for the mode part, and I think it was seconded. Everybody ready to vote on that? Okay, so, you don't know the order that you are on my screen, but that's the way I'm going to do it. So Dana?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John Bailey, yes, that's unanimous.
And a thank you to all the administrators, the entire team, the superintendent, Vinnie, Tom Geary, all the administrators in our schools. I know this was a, a big lift.
Yeah, and I can add, teachers to that, our teacher design team was amazing. And it, and thank you for those kind words. But I would echo that this has been a remarkable team effort, and I feel privileged to work with the colleagues in this.
Okay, now, I'm going to offer the committee, if they would like, a five or 10-minute recess, that opportunity.
I need a two-minute recess.
Two-minute recess.
No more, because I really need to be, I have to be on another meeting.
I hear you, Stacy, but I've just missed my PT appointment, and I'm going to have to pay 75 bucks, because I didn't get it canceled. So we all have a pain point here, so.
I, I just, I just need to use the.
And a motion to recess, or maybe I can just do it. I'm going to make a recess, we're going to be back here at 3:20. So, next up.
So, do you want to talk about the calendar then first, because it's quick? No? Okay.
Because Stacy doesn't need to be here to vote on that.
Okay.
The next thing up, well, unless Stacy, do you want to vote on the calendar? I know it's, that's my thing, not your thing. No, she hasn't, okay.
I don't care about the calendar, right? That's fine, we can vote on the calendar, we just, I.
Let's, okay. So, we need now to decide what our intention is for, assuming the calendar gets voted, September 14th. So what that means is, do we think that the way the district will start the year should start as a hybrid based on the metrics or our belief about how kids learn best, or based on the data that we've received? Or should we start remote based on that same sort of grouping of information?
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Maybe, what is it?
Well, it, you know, there's a lot of folks saying, you know, start hybrid, a lot of folks are start, saying start remote. I just want to clear that remote, I think what they're saying, remote just means not in-person. So we could vote hybrid, but say, students will not be in school until October 1st.
Correct.
Or November 1st. I just want to be sure to, to clear that we can say it's hybrid, but students may not be in-person in school in any capacity.
Yeah, so if you.
That sounds very confusing to me, Peter.
Clarify that, Peter.
Need to clarify.
What we're talking about, so when, one of the things that I think it's important for the community to think about, and for the community to think about, is that none of us can guarantee what September 14th will look like, right? Because conditions continue to move, and we're, we're living in a fluid, uncertain environment. So what I, I think the committee can do is to say, this is the likely scenario. But I, I think that the, the committee needs to be cautious about any guarantee with any modality. If, so, the plan allows the students to move from a remote learning environment, a hybrid learning environment, and then it's. So what you want to indicate to the community is, at this moment, we're knowing what we know about where we will be on September 14th, regarding what you heard about ventilation, what you, what you've heard about different safety issues, what you see in the plan. Do you think that it is going to be likely that the community will start in hybrid, remote, or in-person? Then the, the other task here is, what, how do we decide when that, that, that indicator shifts, right? What, what is the, who is the deciding body? How does that happen? So if you set an expectation now that this is what's likely to happen, how do we then decide how, who is determining whether or not that, that that modality should change, given any kind of fluidity within the COVID trajectories? So the first question is, where do you think it should start? Knowing that it's always tentative. And then the second question is, how do we monitor that decision to make sure that it still makes good sense?
Can I just?
Yeah, can I just? Information in first, David, and then you can, so, at one point, the commis, commissioner said something like, 90% of districts look like they're going to go hybrid. The data that's been created by the DESI doesn't appear to reflect that. But there are more districts going hybrid than remote. And there's actually a couple of districts that are full back in, Concord, which means, I think, just the elementary school and Amherst, which I guess, since they don't have the college kids coming back, they're not so worried about anymore. But, um, so we just need to keep in mind that every district around here is having to make this decision, because it's not being made on any sort of a globalized level. So what someone's doing in the next town over is based on their own financial situation, their own facilities, their own whatever committee. So whatever we, whatever we decide is right. So David, sorry, I cut you off, go ahead.
No, I, I mean, I, I guess I can just use my time for it, because I was just going to say that, you know, one, one thing that Mary Beth said that I sort of disagree with is the fact that we can be in complete control of our destiny as of September 14th, right? Because it, it doesn't matter if everything gets finished, if we decide to go remote, and we can take, spend the next month starting to start remote, right? So, so like the fact that everything's changing, we can control that. And I, I sort of want to bring that out there, but, and, and you can even take that away from my time, because I guess I could have just said that, that.
So at this point, I think this is really important, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we're going to time it, to be honest with you. So do people have questions that they need answered before they can make this vote? Peter seems to have a question, so we'll let Peter ask a question. And I'm hoping, I see that Dr. Perez is still here, but I do not know if, if Mary Beth Ting is still here, but we'll see. Go ahead, Peter.
So I'm still unclear, we can, can we say, I mean, it seems like hybrid is unavoidable, just because even, you know, some parents are, are going to keep their kids out of school. Can we, can we say hybrid, but say no in-person learning until a later date? Can, or, or do we say, are we saying this is, we are starting remote? How, how can we, I guess, I want to find our terms.
Do that, Peter, but you would have to give a reason for that.
I just wanted to find our terms, when we're saying, I don't know if I'm at, if I'm just misunderstanding, or.
So Dana, we'll have you go, and then I'm going.
Is it okay to respond to Peter? Because I, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping this will be helpful, and and if not, then people can correct me. But the plan that, so we just approved the whole plan, and the whole plan actually has in-person, fully in-person, hybrid, which is the two days on, three days remote, and fully remote, in addition to a separate program for the fully remote learners who are going to be fully remote regardless. So right now, my understanding is, we've already got that plan, we have the plan, and all we're saying is, how would we start? So if we started in hybrid, that would mean that everybody is going to school the two days, you know, with the cohorts, Monday, Tuesday, and then, you know, the remote day.
Ready, yeah.
If we started in remote, the remote model, then that, we would still be within that plan, but everybody would be going remote.
Okay, so.
Then we could, using those metrics, so like if we started in hybrid on September 15th, let's say there was an uptick in town, or something happened, or any number of things, we could switch it to remote, but we'd still be within the plan that we just voted on.
Okay, so we all, those are, that's defining our terms, right? Where we're deciding in-person, hybrid, or remote.
Yes, with the understanding that there's always going to be some people who are on a fully remote track, no matter what. I mean, they're, they're decided, it's really what are we doing with the other part of the population?
Okay, thank you, I just wanted that clarifying.
And people who choose to be fully remote will have options during the year for when they want to switch to hybrid. And people who are hybrid can have kind of sort of a little bit more option on when they switch out.
And, and back to Peter, one of your original questions, which I think David has asked too, we can choose to start remote, and we can choose to go to hybrid at any time, based on metric and fulfilling criteria. at any time, based on metric and fulfilling criteria. Uh, there's a, there's a notion in the community that if we start remote, we're stuck the whole year. That has never been my understanding, that that's one position. But we can always pivot to hybrid and we can always pivot up to in-person if life is grand and we're back to normal. We can always do that.
You put it well earlier when you said this is the beginning of the year. It's not the middle and the end of the year. It's just until we get through this crisis phase.
So, I, I think that's accurate, what Anna just said. I think that's correct. And I also would like to just put out there that based on if we were saying that the way that we're going to determine things is based on metrics, um, I, I think we have a lot of flexibility about how we do that. And I think if we were to choose to begin in a remote setting, it would be very difficult to justify moving from remote to hybrid if the metrics didn't significantly improve. And I want to put out there that our metrics are pretty low right now. So that's my opinion. That's an opinion. Um.
Mary Beth Ting is still here and so is Dr. Perez. So in those metrics that were proposed, could you address if currently we were in what would be considered the okay-to-go-back mode? And I'm not sure if Mary Beth Ting is still in the panelist. That's what I don't know. But Dr. Perez is, but she's moved inside because it must be hot outside.
You're gonna die. Can charge it. Um, so in regards to your question, I mean, I think the best way to answer that is based on the numbers that you're already seeing right now. So I think as it has been released, we're technically white based on how they're describing risk level. So based on that, we are in position to start hybrid, knowing that the expectation is that the risk, the cases are likely to increase, especially with the increase in risk with the flu season, right? The interaction of the two. So that's the first thing to consider. But the safety is based on the understanding that masks will be used in the school. So I think that's the other thing that the committee does have to understand because there's a lot of control with maybe older kids. There's less of that with younger kids. And that's when we were thinking about those metrics, to what extent can you guarantee that? Um, because every child is also going to react differently to wearing masks all day. Some will be completely fine because they're used to it and some will not. Um, so in terms of the safety, um, what I would have loved to have seen and, and worked out is, you know, what's gonna happen? I know that there'll be mask breaks, for instance, but what's gonna happen if you have a child who's really just needing more of that? And if there's only one teacher in the classroom and there aren't spaces for that. So those are the other pieces that I think need to be worked out because right now it technically is safe. Um, but again, based on appropriate distancing and appropriate use of masks.
Yeah, thank you. It is, can you, do you see, Mary Beth Ting does say she's here, but I don't see that she's here to speak. Is she over?
Over, see if she's at the, in the attendees.
She's got her hand up, so she's up at the top. So if you can just pull her over. That would be, I, I know, I know. He has some ideas about what needs to be done before school starts so that we meet some of the things that Dr. Perez just talked about.
Yeah, I totally agree with what Dr. Perez said. We're in what's called the unshaded territory right now. Um, that, you know, it does point out that that's for smaller communities, uh, which ours definitely are. You know, Hamilton is about eight thousand and change and Wenham's five thousand and change. So we're very small communities. Um, so you know, the smaller case numbers are more significant for our smaller communities just because of the percentage, right? But, um, it has generally been low. So, uh, Dr. Perez spoke to the external factors, um, and was just speaking to the internal factors. So that's the part that we really need to be working on now. And something that I've been speaking with my nurse colleague at the high school, the district nurse leader, is, um, the real need for education of families and rolling out, um, education to students. I have some ideas that I'm really excited about in terms of education, but that truly needs to start happening. You know, if the potential start of school date is the fourteenth, I think that needs to happen by September first so that we're blasting regularly for a good full two weeks with information to families about, yes, you've had a mask that you've been wearing for months, but here's how to hack it so that it's really fitting appropriately to really and truly cover your nose and mouth. There are not gaps at the sides. Um, you know, I've been researching and doing some things about that. So I really think there's a lot of education that need, we need to push out so that kids are prepared to, um, be in compliance with what we're asking about for school. Because we know, many of us know from being out and about in the community, that, um, people have gotten much more lax about it and relaxed and are getting together with other friends. And there's another proposal. Um, we've been meeting with, um, the lead nurse over at Pingree School. And Pingree has something called the Pingree Pact, which is a, a behavioral expectation that they're asking for families to undertake in the two weeks preceding start of school. And I think it's a wonderful idea to roll that out to the community as well, to be saying, you know, we're anticipating being back in two weeks. That's the quarantine period. We're not asking people to quarantine. I, I want to make that clear. But here are things to begin to be doing as you anticipate sending your kids back to school and provide them with that education so that we can all be pulling the oars in the same direction, rather than one side pulling one way and one side and the other. And you know that that just makes you go round and round in circles. So those are really important steps that I think we need to make as a community, working together to get our students back in school.
Yeah, like don't have a big Labor Day picnic, you know, blowout at your house because it's.
That's something that it's a real concern of mine, actually, and that, um, I'm really concerned to see what the data are looking like for our two communities, say about September seventh, September eighth. You know, are we still in the position we are now? I pray that we are. But, you know, as a society, we're used to doing certain things, certain ways. Um, I'm really grateful that so far, you know, we didn't have a massive uptick after Memorial Day or after July fourth. So I am hoping and praying that after, uh, Labor Day, it will be the same. But people tend to gather and, you know, we are finding in the state and a number of places and communities not far from ours, um, people are having larger gatherings and wanting to celebrate a celebration that they've been putting off for a while. So those are things I think we need to attend to for the internal, um, matrices.
In addition to that, I think, i- if I may, um, the other thing, I mean, I know we're talking a lot about the safety, sort of the physical safety, the, the risk of transmission, which is obviously the, the hallmark of this. But the other piece is when you're having students in-house in the schools, how are you going to address part of the education or part of the, I think, support that needs to be offered is how the anxiety or how the potential, um, perceptions of stigma could interfere with our ultimate goal, which is to enhance learning. Um, so again, that's sort of taken us a little bit broader than I think the intention, but i- in terms of the plans and how you're moving forward, I feel like you do, there's a need to attend to that as well. Um, so I just wanted to contribute that piece.
Yeah, and, and I would support that, Dr. Perez, that, again, the social emotional needs of students, both from coming back from being in really, in, uh, an unusual global pandemic. Um, that's one of the issues that we want to look at, but also how do we treat one another kindly and respectfully when we may have different needs in this environment? Um, and being really attentive to that. Um, again, I, I'm really pleased that we have the twelve days in advance of students coming back in whatever form to have our teachers, who I, um, believe strongly will be able to come up with really powerful strategies to ensure that our students are feeling comfortable and welcomed in our schools, whether they be, um, remote or in-person. And, and I can sh- share with you that that is a clear priority for this district is to ensure the social emotional wellbeing of all of our students and all of our staff.
Okay. Dana, I'm gonna ask you to make a motion. Then we're gonna discuss if there's anything left for people to discuss and then we're going to vote. So you get to decide what that motion says.
We don't have a prepared.
Should we check or?
Well.
No, 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 I, we don't. So I, because I guess. So I understand that I get to pick which word, but what I, what I, what I'm wondering is, is the phrasing that we're looking for that we anticipate in this moment to be opening in a certain way? Or are we saying?
Mary Beth.
Of course, this is how we're opening.
Do you still have that mercurial statement or did, because I kind of was like, hmm, is that gone?
Let me pull that up. I, I do have that somewhere. Give me just a moment.
Mary Beth had something to propose, but it had the word mercurial in it, which I was kind of like, I don't really want that in a motion.
I, I, um, I think that whatever we decide should have some measure of planned, um, certainty so that parents can plan around it. I'm still uneasy with saying if then thus. Uh, I mean, I think we need to give some people some kind of a plan for their childcare and work arrangements, but.
I think.
I think we need to decide.
I think we are, yes. I, I think we are, but knowing that we're in a pandemic. So, uh, we're deciding one thing, but again, there could be an uptick. And people understand that. I, and I, I don't think we need, I think we should just go right to the motion.
No, I'm willing to make the motion. I just want to know whether the motion should say, um.
I, I wonder if you said something like in recognition of the fluid or mercurial nature of our current reality, um, we are, um, voting to move forward with, you know, X modality with the understanding that that could change if circumstances change, something to that effect.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a stab at it and you guys can tell me whether you think I need to redo. Okay? Um, so I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District open in the hybrid model with the acknowledgement that fluid circumstances around the pandemic could create a need to change that model.
Second. Sounds like it was good enough for Stacy, so she seconded. Okay, so, um.
And I, I'd like to just, oh, go ahead.
If you would like to be the first person to speak, by all means, you can be the first person to speak. Speak first.
I, I only just, the only thing I wanted to say was the reason that I chose the word hybrid was because I think to Anna's point, right, that if we were to vote, if I had said it the other way, that.
I agree with you. I, I agree with you.
That is something that we wouldn't need. We could say we're gonna go remote for the year. We cannot vote and say we're gonna go hybrid for the year because we, right? So that's, I just wanted to explain my reasoning on.
I thought you did a great job with your motion. Good job.
Go ahead, Anna.
Um.
Time this, but be judicious with your words. Stacy has like less than forty-five minutes.
I understand. Um, so my concern, uh, is that we're assuming a little bit more risk than I think is necessary. I, I think what I'm proposing is something of a compromise whereby we start remote and we give it a look in a two or three week time period to really get a better sense of confidence. And if the numbers are still supportive, I have no qualifica- no qualms about going to hybrid. I really don't. I'm just very concerned that by starting in a position of risk, we're with so many unknowns, I would rather start with something more certain for our parents. I am profoundly concerned that if we get it wrong, and I know we're all hoping for the best, but I, I just, I am not comfortable starting in that position. Uh, I also have, from, from a sort of a, a life and death, health and safety point of view. I'm not saying that's permanent, but that's where I'm starting from. I would rather offer the compromise, start slow. That said, I think the desire for social and emotional connection is really important, but I think there's ways to do that outside of the curriculum. So what I would suggest is if we do that and we start remote and we reevaluate in two weeks' time and we look at the metrics, that we could build in, you know, like a back-to-school thing, uh, for the second graders. And they can have that two-hour face-to-face and make a connection with their teacher. I don't think we have to deny the entirety of social emotional, just because we're starting there. I think we could be flexible to let people have the face-to-face outside the building, in small groups. And I, I, that's the part that most of our MOLI district speaks to me is people want an emotional connection. So my preference would be to prioritize true safety and certainty for both parents and for teachers. And I, I do, I can't say this, um, you know, it breaks my heart what we've done to schooling in America. And it breaks my heart that we're asking teachers to take on yet another, really, uh, insurmountable task. And I'm not comfortable with the fact that our union is saying so strongly, we don't like this, we don't feel safe. I don't know what kind of message it sends that we're telling people they have to do something they think is, is not safe. And I have total faith in our teachers to make everything work, but I think that our schools are broken right now. And I think we're asking schools to do something they're not meant to do and kids aren't meant to do. But that said, I know people want the hybrid. So I'm saying, okay, let's keep it on the table. I'm just saying, let's start slow because the, the difference between two weeks is not, that's not gonna make or break anyone's existence. If your child's future is gonna be completely derailed by starting and reevaluating every two weeks, I'm not really sure that that level of hyperbole is, is reasonable. I think, I would say start cautious and hope for the best as opposed to start hopeful and risk something major. That's, that's sort of my position. I support the remote start with a look every two weeks until it's safe. And I do think we have to meet the terms of the MLU and our buildings have to be fixed. And I think a little bit of extra time gets us to a place of certainty. That's how I feel about it.
Um, anybody else want to speak? Peter?
Am I next? I thought I saw someone else's hand. I thought I saw Michelle Horgan's hand go up first.
Oh, I didn't see her hand. She, she's do- she's doing the like bidding thing, so she didn't.
I think Dana and Michelle Horgan both had their hands up.
Okay, uh, do you want to go, Peter?
Uh, sure, why not? Um, I'll be brief. I mean, the facts are, um, this virus kills. And when it doesn't, it does things like causes permanent heart and lung damage. Uh, the facts are that Hamilton, uh, Wenham and Massachusetts are not in a bubble. And the facts are that states around the country who have opened up their schools, um, see their, um, numbers spiking. The facts are that, um, the teachers in a, in a hybrid model, the teachers would be seeing every student, you know, and, and increasing their exposure for everyone in the entire community. Um, the facts are our classrooms in the fall are stifling, hot and humid. Um, the facts are our teachers have anxiety about, um, starting school in person. And the facts are that students are going to be in a dystopian environment. I know they think they're going to have this great social emotional connection, but, you know, they're going to be six feet apart. They're going to be wearing masks. It's going to be hot and humid. There'll be no moving around. The rooms are going to be Spartan. No socialization. Uh, we'll have to have constant mask breaks, constant hand washing. Um, there's going to be anxiety-filled, um, rooms. And they'll be punished, you know, students will be punished or reprimanded for not wearing masks, for keeping distance. Uh, you know, violations. And I believe we should be cautious right now and come back and revisit. We should start in remote, knowing that we can move back to hybrid. So we should give parents clarity, start in remote now, knowing that if the numbers stay steady after, uh, you know, we see that there's no spikes in the, in our surrounding communities, we can quickly move into hybrid. So I, I think we should, I honestly, wholeheartedly believe we should start remote at, at this point in time, knowing what we, the facts are, and then move to hybrid later.
Um, Michelle Horgan?
Um, we need to go remote, in my opinion. Start off remote. The numbers are only gonna get worse. The kids need to make connections with their teachers. My fair, if we start remote, we'll never leave remote. The thought that starting in remote will give teachers an opportunity then to move to hybrid, they're not gonna have that opportunity because they're gonna be too busy working on their remote teaching style. They're not gonna be able to switch over easily to hybrid. I know they want to start. Some do want to start remote because they feel the building is unsafe. And I, I feel for them. I do. But our kids need to be in school. We need to start hybrid while the, in strike, while the iron is hot. We can't do this remote thing when our numbers are low and the, um, pediatricians are telling us the kids need to go back. The CDC is telling us the kids need to go back. It's important that the kids go back to school. It's important that the kids go back to school. And we start hybrid. Thank you.
Um, Stacy, I saw your hand go up a second ago.
You know, I think going to remote would be a disservice to our kids. Right now, the numbers are low and we need to start with the hybrid. That um, is the what ifs, what what could happen? And that's just like getting out of bed, it's going in a car, what if I could get in an accident, I could get killed. Um, I mean, people can get, you know, you could get cancer, you could get sick just walking outside. I just feel that, you know, if we're gonna keep holding on, how long are we gonna make this remote? I really don't think we're doing a service um, for our kids. Our kids need the social and emotional. And um, everybody needs to start working and then, you know, if there are issues, then we visit it. You know, as Mary Beth said, you know, putting together a task force to help monitor it. And um, and get everybody going. I'm concerned with the ra- the rise in kids thinking about you know, suicide rates right now. Um, I'm the, you know, right now, the American Pediatric Association is, you know, saying it's fine, we're in a white area in Hamilton Wenham. You know, if things were to change, I would think differently.
I think we need to start with hybrid.
Dana?
I I know David hasn't spoken yet, I'm sorry. Did you, did you?
Oh, no, I, okay, I didn't see. I thought, I personally thought he was trying to save his for last. Do you want to speak? Well, then we'll let David speak. Or do you want to go, Dan? Why don't you go, Dana, and then David will speak and then?
So I and I, mine is, well, I have actually like a clarifying question for Anna. Um, just on specifically what she proposed, which is when you say two weeks, are you talking about two weeks from now? Or are you talking about two? So in other words, are you saying if for two weeks, everything remains steady from now? Or are you talking two weeks from the start of school on September fourteenth, everything remains steady?
Yeah, I'm talking from September fourteenth. So we start, we so everyone can plan to get to the fourteenth in the remote. We get to the fourteenth and we go in remote for two weeks. And during that time is a means of building some connection, especially for our elementary learners. I'm proposing like on Tuesdays, the second graders go to school, the seventh graders go to school and like the sophomores go to school. And they go and they meet their teacher and they get a chance to kind of say, okay, here's who I am, who's who you are, outside safely to build the connection. Because I do think that is a huge tie. And then I say two weeks from the fourteenth, so that would be September twenty eighth. We look and see where the numbers are because if these trends are true, well, then we'll know maybe it's not safe. If the trends, if the trends are good, then we could switch to the hybrid. And my point is that's ten days of learning. Like, I don't think that's gonna make or break, but it's gonna give us a lot more data after Labor Day, after the start of school, once people are back in the mix, it gives Tom time to really have a better assurance we can fix the building. I and then if I found the twenty eighth, it still doesn't seem safe or the numbers have gone down, then we can stay remote and we revisit. I'm simply saying, let's just be cautious.
Okay, thank.
Every two weeks.
Okay, and and my question, I guess, is to Anna again and to Peter, and I don't know because David and Michelle, you haven't spoken yet, but to Anna and Peter, my question is on that. So that basic proposal, let's just use Anna's example. Peter, in particular, I'd be interested in what you have to say is, let's say we did that. And then at the end of two weeks, if things were where they are right now and we had six weeks where everything stayed the same, I guess, would you feel safe? Or I guess, how would we know or how would you know when you felt like it was safe, is my question?
So I'll I'll answer that.
I actually want to ask Peter, because I.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
We'll have more data. And frankly, because when we look around the country and all those schools who have opened up and have their numbers spiking, you know, hundreds of you know, thousands of kids infected, um, we'll know by, you know, if all this co- communities in Massachusetts open up in hybrid and their numbers start going up, we will know that it's a mistake to go back in.
Right, so that, no, that's really helpful to me. So like, that would be.
It's gonna be data.
It's really more you're looking at around and saying this, the schools who you would be waiting to see what other schools experience.
Yeah, they data driven, not fear driven, data driven, you know, empirical evidence to show that numbers are staying flat, safety place are working. Um, but and but if the numbers go up, we know that.
And would you and 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 I'll be quiet, I guess, but I like, I'm just, I'm really genuinely curious about if you're starting in remote, do you see the possibility that you actually would feel comfortable moving at any point to hybrid?
I do, absolutely. I think for the, I think for the parents that want that for their kids, we have to keep that open. To Dr. Perez's points, if if you're a parent who has concerns about the sort of social emotional trauma of being back, you're always gonna have that remote option. And I'm happy that we have that because some people just may not get there. But I absolutely think if after two weeks and we have a little more data and a little more time, I would be, it is, so I guess to your point, if our numbers are where they are now, or maybe, maybe we get lucky, they're a little better. Then I would say absolutely, let's let's go to the hybrid for those who want it. I'm not saying to take it away. I just feel like I would like a little bit more time to sort of pump the brakes. I'm not saying stop the car. I'm just saying, look, just pump the brakes. Because when the state did its reopening, just like that, the state did it in chunks, right? It wasn't all or nothing, it was phased in. So I just, I'm I'm just, I absolutely would support hybrid for those families who want it. I think we have to keep it on the table and if families don't feel comfortable with the emotional trauma being in school, there's this nice remote option for them. They can choose it. No one's taking anything away from everyone. We're serving both populations. I'm simply saying give ourselves two weeks' time to know, to sort of instead of hoping that it's safe, to know that it's safe. And then we could go forward for those who want it. I just, I'm uncomfortable in my personal opinion, risking the lives of staff or parents or teachers or grandparents or caregivers. I'm asking for a two week evaluation, but to your point, still based on data. I'm not saying like two weeks we do a gut check. It's like, no, if we're still in, if we're still in the green zone, two weeks in. Let's go for it.
Isn't that one of the things we need to determine is how often the advisory committee reports to the superintendent and how often we look at the data? Um, instead of just saying two weeks, we might have to be even more nimble than that and saying.
I think we have to be much more nimble than that if if we were, and I think we would.
Tomorrow, it's like a snow day.
Right, it would need to be, if if we were, if we were in in person in any way, it would need to be extremely nimble, that it would need to be.
Right.
And that's where I think we should, you know, you know, instead of what if and keep looking at dat- data, you know, why we are low right now. And if we're gonna look at other school districts, people who have got the uptick in COVID are mo- are mostly cities. And we are a small district and we're towns, we're in the white level, we're not even, you know, any kind of cautionary. And so I think it's just unfair to start remote. I just nervous about, you know, that we go remote and then we'll never go hy- um, hybrid at all. We've got parents who are wanting this. What if there's a big parent revolt that they decide they're gonna form pods? You know, because they've had it with, you know, the remote. People are talking, I've already heard people talking about putting pods together and then our school district loses money. Because uh, we as a school committee didn't listen to parents as well. I'm not saying not to be safe, I'm saying to think of the picture. And, you know, if we keep waiting, you know, uh, remote, remote, people can choose if they want hybrid or remote.
David, it's your turn.
There's uh, three ways to be looking at this entire process, right? There's the sort of the the economic value of going back, right? Which I think we've now ruined for absolutely everybody in town, right? So no matter what, if we go back remote or only two days a week, um, you know, there's a lot of people that are gonna have to be um, making adjustments with their with their bosses, no work situations. So taking that off the table, the other thing we have to look at is, you know, the health standpoint, right? And and that's what everyone's sort of concentrating on here, rightfully so. But that's also the only the only sort of silo with a variable. Right? That's the only thing that could change. And i- if we look at this, you can also look at this for it in in just educational model, right? Like, in the past two years, our curriculum has been moving to a UBD model, right? So it's like backwards design. Excuse me, if we spend the next month planning to go to school remotely, we know there's no variable that can change that at the last second, right? So that way, we're actually doing a month of positive planning to go into that. You know, Anna's idea of, you know, two weeks, that's from an educational standpoint, that's not from a health standpoint, right? So so you can make that number whatever you want. It's the health standpoint that's that variable that can change at a day's notice. Right? So I think it makes the most sense to be prudent and be planning the best education we can for the most certain outcome of this year. Right? It's the only thing we have that's certain. Right? It is just planning that education for full remote because everything else, you know, is based off a variable that you're in no control. Right? So I I just think that, you know, how do we use this next month to our best advantage? And and that's the way I think we should be looking at this right now. Because like I said, everyone in town, when I head to my baseball game later, I'm gonna hear from everybody because we ruined that a whole economic thing, right? We we made nobody happy with that, but I don't think there was actually any way, you know, that that that's a failure at levels above us, right? We were sort of left with the bag on that. You know, that health standpoint is the variable. But if we plan, spend the next month planning on what it's gonna look like going back face to face, right? In the thirteenth, the numbers flip up, then what are we gonna do? Right? Because now we're, we had a whole month that we could have been planning that we're changing at the last second.
Offer just one point of clarification is that during those twelve days of planning, one of the things that we will be doing is preparing to operate under any modality. Um, just so that that you're aware that whatever the board decides today, we will be using that time to be sure that teachers are prepared to um, move between any of those modalities. So we will not be um, training folks just on the modality that's chosen today.
All right, so it's my turn. Um, so the first thing I'd like to say is that I am in a super difficult position because I, um, you know, I am also a teacher, so um, I'm not just making this decision as a parent or as a school committee member, but also as a teacher, so. Um, that's really hard because I know every teacher is scared and every teacher is afraid. And I know why they're afraid. It's because forever, we have not respected teachers and we haven't paid them well and we haven't kept up our buildings well. We haven't, they have to buy their own materials, so they're afraid that we're not gonna be able to keep them safe because we're not gonna do what we need to do. So we need to do what we need to do to keep them safe. And we need um, to work with our union to provide them with the things that they are um, seeking in order to keep their members safe. So that is a variable that's out there. We're trying to come to terms on that. We have a lot of work to do um, around the buildings. I didn't ask this question, but I don't know what the busing situation is. We have a lot of work to do around busing. We have a lot of work to do around, you know, getting our uh, equipment, you know, our technology, getting that out to families. We've got a lot of work to do. And if we are spending time building a remote plan that we plan to use for two weeks, we're not gonna be necessarily trying to put it on the right path. And I also feel the community wants the hybrid. And the people who want remote have an option. And I personally feel like if I had an elementary school kid, I I might choose the remote option because I actually think that's a pretty good deal. And I actually think it's maybe better than the hybrid deal for an elementary school kid. Um, but I feel like we have to start in hybrid. We have to give it a chance. If we find that the community is not doing their part, they're not wearing their mask, the kids are not wearing their mask, they're not being sent to school with their mask and their water bottles, if we find the community is um, having large events, if they're organizing things and we're having upticks, then it's a no deal. It, then everybody's home. So if you want your kids to be in the hybrid mode and to stay in the hybrid mode, you gotta get them a mask that fits, you gotta get yourself a mask that fits, you need to be wearing it. And you can't be having your friends over um, and not wearing a mask. So we just need to follow the guidelines and I feel like we can do that. Um, so I'm gonna support that we start with hybrid and I'm gonna also support that we set up met- metrics. And I'm gonna also support that as soon as those metrics go in the wrong direction, we're gonna be staying home. So we have to do everything we can to keep them in the right spot, so. Yeah, yeah, Mahala is here. Is that? Okay, so Mahala, if you by any chance could reread the motion, if you're, if you're here and listening.
Yeah, I'm I'm here, hold on. Let me get there.
Michelle, Hannah had a question too.
Yep, well, we're gonna hear the motion because that'll help us.
Okay, so I wasn't able to capture the last part of it, but it went a little something like this. I move that the Hamilton Wannam Regional School Committee open in the hybrid model given that circumstances around the pandemic may change.
Okay.
Perfect, that's all I needed.
Okay, so. Hannah, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wanting to say that the terms of the plan were that were contingent on, you know, a health metric that holds and the MOU of the teachers, all of that remains in effect. And I just want the community to be aware that if we do that, like, it it doesn't mean it's definitely a guarantee. I just want to make sure everyone really knows that. It still could change.
Super unsatisfying because as you pointed out, the hybrid mode is the one where we cannot control whether or not it happens. We have one hundred percent control over whether or not remote happens because we are protecting the community from.
Understood. I I I hope that if this goes, I will hope against all things that I am wrong. This will be a great moment to be wrong. I really hope for our community that I am wrong, to be honest.
Not necessarily wrong, but yeah, I understand what you're saying. Peter?
I I'd just like to echo David's point that it's smarter to start planning for what we know. Start planning for remote now, knowing that this virus could change everything the day before. And but i- and I'd just like to respectfully disagree with you, um, Chair Bailey in that it will not be a waste, it won't be wasted by planning for remote now for only two weeks when when all this remote planning eve- will still be used in a hybrid mode.
Yeah, it's all about.
Not wasted time.
It's all about risk and I, you know, it's kind of, it's interesting to me that those of us who are older parents have had like that painful experience of allowing our kids to drive. And I'm telling you, it's the most terrifying thing in the world because you know the risk is real. You know that your kid could die driving a car, but you let him go anyway.
But we know the safety.
Because you've prepared them, because you've prepared them with the right car, you've prepared them how to drive, you've taught them what to do and it is.
Yeah.
I'm scared, I'm scared too.
Yeah.
I'm scared for everyone, but I cannot let fear of something that we cannot control stop us from moving forward with the right decision.
But we've.
Our 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 children are are our most precious gift. And they're being so they're they're being hurt. Um, and their 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 growth is being delayed emotionally, um, educationally and socially everywhere. Th- this is this, uh, us keeping them from school. I I think is riskier than 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 us, um, than than when they don't go.
We're gonna let, I agree, we're gonna let Peter talk and then we're gonna vote and if the vote fails, then we're gonna talk some more.
I know there's a lot of, we keep using this. I know there's a lot of, we keep using this analogy that students, you know, go out in their cars, but we've had 100 years of making cars safe, making roads safe, training people on how to drive. We've only had, we're only going to have a few weeks in order to train kids how to stay safe in our schools. It's, it's, I just don't, I think we need more time to prepare students on how to be safe in this environment.
Before Stacy leaves, I saw two hands, so I'm going to honor that. I saw Anna and I saw Dana. So go Anna and then go Dana.
I think, I think what's frustrating right now is that we're treating all this as so very binary, as if it's all or nothing. I really think there's a middle ground that we're overlooking in our, our, our push here. So I just, you know, nothing in life is black and white. Like there's lots of shades of gray is one point. The other thing too is Michelle, I, I love the way you speak to me, both of the Michelles, but I'm speaking specifically to Michelle Horgan right now about, you know, risk. Actually, both of you, you're both beautiful and how you're talking about it. I think the thing that troubles me is that you can mitigate a lot of those things. You can mitigate social emotional pain. You can have counseling, you can have trauma there, you can, you can recover learning loss. You keep coming back to the fact that this virus is indiscriminate and we don't know when it's going to happen. And in a lot of cases, we don't even know when kids are sick. You can't tell. You can kind of tell when your kids are coming off the rails and you could get them help, right? You could get them counseling, you can be supportive, you can do things to mitigate that. If a third grader who's asymptomatic, who plays, you know, club soccer in New Hampshire and comes back and gives that to their teacher unknowingly, despite all the masks and everything, nobody can see that. And I'm just saying, I'd love to have more data around the stuff that we can not see because once you're, once you're dead, you're dead, you know? You can support and mitigate every other thing except for a loss of life. So I, I hear the impassioned things, you know? Everyone knows I have two children. They are suffering. I, I feel it, but they're still alive. And I'm just saying, give ourselves time to make a better decision, a more informed decision before we decide to roll those dice. I'm just not willing to roll the dice, but I fully respect what everyone's saying. I'm just asking for a little bit more time or Jen Clifford, I'm asking for a little bit more grace right now. That's all. I won't speak anymore.
Dana?
I'm not, I mean, I don't, I could say more, but I'm not, not sure that I need to.
All right.
One more point?
Yes.
I, I know that there's a lot of talk about kids need that social emotional learning piece, that kids are suffering because they're not interacting with their peers. But school is going to be very dystopian. There, there's going to be no interaction. They're going to be wearing masks. It's going to be hot and humid and miserable. They're going to be six feet apart. They're not going to be able to interact with their friends. There's going to be Spartan rooms. There's going to be harsh punishments for violations of masks and physical distance policies. They're going to be with teachers who are going, whose anxiety may rub off on the students. There's going, they're going to be with peers who are going to have high anxiety. There's going to be kids who are going to have anxiety attacks and have to go to some kind of space that hasn't been determined yet. If someone has symptoms, they have to go to a, a triage room. I just think that environment is less healthy than being at home with a supportive thing.
I think we're at a place where we know what people are going to vote and I think we know how the vote's going to go down and it's going to be very close, which is going to put us in very good company. A lot of committees that have voted so far, it's been a split vote. And that is because this is not an easy vote. It's not easy. Nobody has the right answer and nobody's satisfied with our choices. They're all bad. It's all bad because everybody wants things to go back to normal and we're not going back to normal for a while. So we just need to, I think everybody here has done a fantastic job today expressing themselves in a respectful way and really getting your point across. And I really feel for all of us and all of you.
I, I think we should.
Got to be quick because I promised Stacy she could be here to vote. I'm not going to let her down.
So I'd like to call for a vote.
Yeah, I, I agree.
A solution? Some districts are splitting it where the younger grades go one way, the older grades.
Peter, we're going to vote. If it fails, we'll go back. And trust me, Peter, I really, like, I was hoping our plan was going to be a lot less what it is, but it's not. So we're going to go.
Is this simple majority or super majority?
That's a very good question.
Simple because it's not budget.
Peter, we're going to vote. Okay? And then we're going to ask that of our legal counsel. How about that?
So just to be clear, the vote is hybrid?
Yes. If it fail, yeah, actually, Mary Beth. Yeah. You, do you remember if this meeting was on the original calendar that we voted? Last meeting?
This was an addition. The 12th was the original calendar.
Okay, Peter, we're going to have to go to the, I'm going to go to the bylaws real quick.
Can I? I feel like it's not right to rest this on a technicality. It's pretty clear that it's a four to three split based on what everyone has said, unless someone has a miraculous change of heart. I hear what Peter is saying, but it feels, it would feel wrong to me from a procedural standpoint to, to deny that. I mean, I guess that's what the bylaws are for, but even I in the dissenting crowd feel like it's clear that it's a four, three majority. And I feel like we should respect that, but that's just my.
Remember it's an additional. I think we need, I think we would need legal counsel on that because there's.
I'll, I'll text Naomi if you want to continue with the vote and then have the conversation.
Yeah, if she can read Article Four. Okay. So we'll postpone that vote. Hopefully Naomi will get back to us momentarily.
I think we should vote.
Vote.
We need to vote. We need to vote. It's not fair.
Right. Let's vote. Okay, Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Peter?
No.
Stacy?
Yes.
David?
No.
Joe Bailey, yes. So we need Naomi's advice. Okay? There's something in the bylaws that says something about a special meeting, but it also then references 48 hours. And so some meetings require a two-thirds super majority. So we just need her opinion on that. So the answer is very unsatisfying for those of you in the 316 member viewing audience as we await a legal opinion. So in the meantime, I agree upon is that we are not going to have the children come back on the originally planned date, which I think is sometime next week, I think it was. So, or maybe the week after next. So we need to vote the calendar. So the calendar is in our packet and in a minute, Mary Beth can put it up. But it moves the start of school back to the 14th. The teachers will come one day later, which will give them the two days we would have originally planned for them plus the 10 days that the commissioner has suggested is necessary at the beginning of the year. So they'll, they'll have 12 days of planning. Then our students will start on September the 14th. Another thing that's been adjusted is usually we have parent teacher conferences on a weekday in the afternoons on two half days. Instead of having two half days on a Tuesday, Mary Beth is recommending that we do a, have the teachers do that on the Wednesday. So that has changed. And then I feel like there was one other, oh, we haven't, we didn't resolve this issue of Wenham is going to use Bukeur on September 1st because there aren't any students there, but we're not sure what's going to happen on November 13th yet. Or, or November.
November 3rd.
November 3rd yet. So.
And did we answer the question, how often the advisory committee will meet to decide whether?
No, because we, we're going to do the calendar, then we're going to get to that as we wait for Naomi.
All right. I want to make sure we're still going to talk about it because.
Oh, we're going to talk about it. I told you to order your dinner. So, okay, so here we are. Anna called me earlier and told me she wanted to make some comments on the calendar. I also had a question as to, it doesn't really say if kindergarten starts on the same day. Traditionally, our kindergartners came back late and I didn't know what day that, that was going to happen. So I don't know if you know that, Mary Beth. Who may be talking to?
Oh. Do you want me to, do you want me to make my comments about the rest of it? Or no?
Comments on the rest of it since you told me what they were.
Okay. So this is more just about showing a spirit of inclusion and recognizing that there's some diversity of religion in our community. So like my comment is that I think we've sort of separated out all of the Jewish holidays, which in effect has othered them. You know, they've excluded them from the Good Friday holiday above. So what I propose is that we actually move Good Friday to be included in the other religious observances because I think they should be treated equally. I would also like to suggest that I, I think it's my understanding from past meetings, the notation of the religious observances, especially on days when school is still in session, is just to be a reminder to teachers to say there are things going on in our students' lives that might affect them in the classroom. So I would also nominate then that we add Ramadan to the calendar for those families who might observe that. Those dates are April 12th to May 11th. And I think, I think we should normalize our religious holidays and I think they should be pluralistic and all-inclusive as much as possible. The other thing I'll note, I don't think it affects the school year this year, but June 19th is Juneteenth, which is now a state holiday. And I think it's something that we start tracking on as well as adding it into our calendar. I don't think, I think it's a Saturday this year, so I don't, it won't, it doesn't affect the school calendar. But again, if we're going to talk about being inclusive, I think we need to make note of all of those days and Juneteenth is now a state holiday. So that needs to be thrown into the mix. That was all.
All right. So. Because you told me you were going to propose this. So you're proposing that take away in school, school in session.
And we move, we move April 2nd Good Friday down.
Move April 2nd Good Friday down, but April 2nd at the top now would say no school.
Correct. Because at present, that is not school day. Is that correct?
At present, it is not a school.
Okay. So I think we make it about not being in school, but if we're going to denote it as holiday, I would put, and just for good measure, I would say Good Friday is, is April 2nd and Easter is April 4th. Those are both pretty major holidays. And then I would add Ramadan and I wouldn't actually note, you know, Juneteenth anywhere formally. That's more of just a statement. We should be tracking that for the next couple of years when it starts to hit the calendar.
Yeah. Does anybody have an issue with kind of those changes? Okay. So we'll work on making those changes. So just in dealing with the days, the days are there. Start, stop, assuming that the numbers are correct. I still have a bad feeling about that, but whatever. If it's wrong, David, guess what? We'll vote again.
Can I just, because you were saying that about the number of days, it's the November, if we look at November.
Yep.
It says 18 school days. Is that right?
I can't tell because it just moved while I was counting.
Whoever's moving it.
Not moving. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. There are 18 days there. Is that what it's supposed to be?
Yeah. And that's correct. And talking to, to Vinnie and looking at the originally voted upon calendar, November was noted as having 17 days.
Yeah, I see it. I wasn't counting that early release day, so I think.
Yeah, it's tricky because.
It's in red, so.
Those red days counter days and three of those red days do not.
That was my error, so got it.
So we'll, we'll make some cosmetic changes to the calendar. Dana, you want to make a motion that we would accept? Like the content of this, knowing that we'll make cosmetic changes later.
Sure. I moved that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the calendar as presented with the exception of some cosmetic changes around religious holidays.
We have a second.
Second, although I somewhat objected to the use of the word cosmetic, but noted.
Well, you know what I mean? They're not changing the number. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Okay.
I don't think religion is cosmetic, but I see what you're trying to get at.
Okay. It, it's perfected, what do you call that document perfection? Is that what you just called it a second ago?
Document vanity.
Yeah. What will you change in the document?
It is, it is, it's documented.
Okay. Does, so I'm not in gallery view, so let me switch that over. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Nope. Great. We're voting. Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Joe Bailey, yes. Dana?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Stacy? No. Okay, David?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Okay. It'll remain a mysterious twice Stacy voted no. Okay. What do we have for time now?
And Michelle, I wanted to let you know, I spoke with Naomi and she confirmed that a simple majority is what was needed on that vote.
Yeah, I think that had something to do with less than 48 hours notice, but I just need to be sure. Okay. So we're going with it was a simple majority. So that means, very unsatisfyingly, that we probably will be remote, but we don't know because we're waiting on the health data. So all of you people out there.
Hold on. I think we probably will be hybrid.
Hybrid, I'm sorry, hybrid. Did I say remote? Maybe I jinxed it. I'm sorry if I did. Okay. So that's where we are in that. So we've done the calendar. Now I had a printed agenda, so.
So I have a question.
Talk about the matrix and how decisions are going to be made. Is there a side for that, Mary Beth?
There is. Yep. Give me one moment and I'll scroll down here.
Do we still have any of the health, Board of Health folks here? Is Dr. Price here or Nurse Stine or anyone?
On the bottom of the screen, I just have their video off, which doesn't mean they left the room. They're there. Ever attentive. It's unbelievable. God bless you guys. Okay. So, Mary Beth?
So one of the things that we have been discussing is the fact that data can change and could potentially change rapidly. And how do we have a, and the ability to make quick decisions, particularly as these decisions impact health and safety of the community? So what we are recommending is that there is a formation of a COVID response team with the following membership that you see up here on the screen and that this group would be pulled together if there is any change in data that would cause us to need to reflect on the, the current learning environment, the current modality of learning environment in the district. So again, on this list, we have the public health nurses from Hamilton and Wenham. We have our lead nurse for the district, myself, Tom Garrity, Director of Facilities, a school committee representative and a HWA Union Representative that would be called together to consider any new information that was, was to come forth.
First of all, I want to frame this out, right? We are not going to vote on any of this because if we vote on this, we create a public body. But what we can vote on is to allow Mary Beth to create a committee however she wants to make it up. She's told us what she was thinking, but we're not going to vote that. We also can't vote who that representative is, otherwise we're part of creating the public body. So if people feel comfortable with charging Mary Beth with this, we can charge her to do this. If people want to create a public body, then they're going to have to post all these emergency meetings and stuff. So, which, whatever. That's.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah. I think Mary Beth needs a flexibility. I, I think actually the body, this group needs the flexibility to meet on a moment. Yeah, I think Mary Beth needs a flexibility. I, I think actually the body, this group, needs the flexibility to meet on a moment's notice. And I want to do what we need to do to support Mary Beth to do that for public safety. So I don't want to create red tape if we don't need to.
All right, so we're going to charge Mary Beth with what? Coming back to us with a matrix?
Well, do we, do we have input on how the matrix, how conservative or lax it is?
After she comes back with a recommendation, sure.
So, so tell me what, what, explain what the, you're saying, Michelle, what you're looking for Mary Beth to?
So what I think, I, I don't know, like this is what I, we know we need a matrix, right? So do we want to work that out with the boards of health ourselves? Do we want to charge Mary Beth with doing that? And then, so I see that as like one little task. Then there's a second little task, which is every day, there has to be some sort of like, you know, my, my husband has this 8:30 call with every like building manager in New England for where he works and they're like, uh, no COVID response, no, no COVID issues today. And then everybody hangs up the phone and they're done.
Yeah, I would, I would.
One day, once in a while, it'll be like we had this happen and this is what we're doing, so.
So I would suggest that the people that I personally would want to see make a matrix are the people that we're sort of looking at here. Like I think that looks like the right party of people. Um, I think that what I'd kind of like to see is, as we discussed, a tidier, more consistent version of the, the, the draft that we were given. So it was really identifiable, but I feel like our, our health nurses and the people listed here could do that. Um, what I want to suggest is that I know in a lot of youth sports, they have sort of a COVID officer, who is that point person who's designated as being in charge of that. And I think that that person, um, you know, should be an identifiable person, so it's not a decision by committee. And somehow or other that, that person is a touch point for kind of saying, wow, we've got a problem, we have to convene this group. And if that person is Mary Beth or maybe the lead nurse, I'm not sure who it is, but I feel like we do need to designate sort of a COVID response officer amongst this team that's a point person for everyone to know. But that's just a suggestion.
David?
I, I, well, well, I'm sorry, two things. Um, one, I just respond to Anna. I actually think that we might need two, right? Because we might want one, one from the, um, school side and then one from the public side, right?
Sure.
Um, so that's great. Um, I just wanted to just bring up that you've only got me for about 10 more minutes and if we need a vote. So, um, I, I just want to, want to let you know that. So, sorry, it's playoffs and God knows I need baseball right now.
Okay, so it doesn't seem like we have a disagreement here. So let's charge Mary Beth, maybe? Oh, wait a minute, we got, we, we have late breaking news here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there has to be a COVID response person. So, so, Mary Beth, do you want to be the COVID response person or is that more of a Tom Gary thing?
I would actually recommend that Tom Gary be that person.
So we could make Tom Gary and be our COVID response person, right?
Correct, for the district. I would also suggest, um, Mary Beth, if you, the other Mary Beth, if you would be willing, I think you have a role in which you are both part of the schools and part of the boards of health. So you have two really important perspectives and I, I wonder if you would be willing to take on a role like that in conjunction with Tom.
Yeah, I was just wondering as we were talking about it, at thinking through operationally, um, when things come up, are we funneling everything to Tom or, you know, what, what that would look like operationally? And maybe that's something as the committee's formed, we can figure out how that works operationally. That it doesn't need to be decided with the school committee necessarily, but then we can report back to how the, uh, response team will work once we're, um, once we're in session.
So, okay, so let's just, let's get that off the table. Dana, can you make a motion that we're going to appoint Tom Gary as our COVID response? What, what is it? COVID response person?
Sure. Uh, I move that the Hamilton, Wenham Regional School Committee, uh, select Tom Gary as the COVID response person.
Second.
Second by Anna, she was quicker.
Sorry, Stacy.
Okay, I don't think we need to discuss it. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes, great. Okay, so then, um, we need to just let Mary Beth know, I think we should just give me, we should probably vote to give Mary Beth the authority to whatever.
To form this group?
Form a COVID response team.
Well, not any, yeah, to, to, that she, we should ask her to form a team to keep her up to date or, I don't even know, what do you?
Do we even need to, do we have a, do we have a meeting next week?
No.
Well, maybe, why?
What I was going to say is, do we even need to do this? We should, we could just have her, uh, bring in a recommendation that we can approve in our next meeting.
Well, can I also say that this was part of the plan that we approved, actually? Just.
Right, so.
Certainly speaking.
We don't really have to vote anything because if Mary Beth can do whatever she wants and buys us to do whatever she wants.
May I ask a question, Chair Bailey?
Sure.
Should we schedule some meetings because we are, we are going to be, um, the superintendent is going to form a advisory body to ki- constantly look at the numbers. And how is it going to work if all of a sudden things change? And we need to just make a decision. Should the school committee just tentatively schedule thing? How often should we schedule? And, and.
I think, I think Mary Beth and I talked a little bit about maybe, um, you know, after they meet, they would be like updating a report or something like that.
Yeah, I think that what's important here is that the immediat- the ability to immediately get a group together and make a determination if something needs to shift. So it's not something that we can schedule for a school committee meeting and say, okay, the numbers have changed, do you want to make a, a shift from one, one modality to the next? Most likely what we would be seeing is a shift from hybrid to remote. And if the numbers were to suggest that is the responsible choice, we would want to make that decision immediately and not have to be held to
Okay.
hours notice of a school committee meeting.
It's like a.
Great, I want to make sure we're nimble.
Like a snow day. Like, we don't know this, Peter, but early, early in the morning on a snow day, the superintendent is talking to the DPW and the police and, and Anthony and Joe and everybody, so it'll be that kind of a thing. Um, so, Mary Beth, are you satisfied that we believe you're coming back with a matrix that we would?
Yeah, what, what I will do next is I will reach out, um, and get this team together and we will continue the work on the, the matrix. Um, I, I think we've got some really strong medical support here, which is going to be critical. Um, and then we can, um, give you at our, at our next meeting, better, better information of exactly how this group is going to operate.
Maybe topics for future meetings. Um, I just want to kind of close some things out. Um, first of all, we'd like to recognize that the assistant superintendent is not here today. That is because, um, just like the royalty in England who had a wedding planned and had to adjust their plan and move their plan and, and, um, but let love went out. He's going to be getting married and we want to wish him well. We want to wish him that he's not watching this, that he's not looking at his phone. His email, that he has literally gone above and beyond the last year to, um, be available and to really serve us and the community. So we want to wish him well. Um, we have a lot of, um, sort of work to do around communication over the course of the next while. I am concerned that our next meeting isn't until September 2nd. But how do you feel about that, Mary Beth?
Yeah, we are going to be highly focused on trying to get all, um, of the tasks ahead of us done in a relatively short time period. Um, I am happy to keep the school committee updated. I'm happy to have another meeting if you feel like that would be, that would feel comfortable for you. Um, I, I'm, either way is.
I'm okay with a pencil meeting. I'm, I, I, I don't know. I, I feel like this group is hard to get together and I would prefer to have a pencil meeting if we need to get to and cancel versus having a meeting for, you know.
I, I agree with Michelle. I think we need to cancel something.
Something before school starts on the calendar.
Well, we have.
We have the second already, though.
I will send out, I will send out a poll or whatever to see when people are available. And if you're not available, this is a no guilt thing. Um, and then I guess I would just, well, we do want to let kindergarten parents know that kindergarten does start the same day this year, which is a different thing than normal. And, um.
And Michelle, I can add that the kindergarten chat with the elementary principals will be taking place, um, this, this upcoming Wednesday evening. Um, I would have to double check if it's six or seven, but if people check the website, the kindergarten meeting has been scheduled for this upcoming Wednesday.
Okay, and then I guess I want to know if we need, if, if you feel you need help with, um, any communication, public relations, uh, stuff that, like, do we need to form a group to do that or? Oh, you know what? The second, and by the, the way, by the second, we need to have a policy.
I.
Policies needs to be in place and Mary Beth Ting, um, may have some suggestions if she hasn't already around masks. Policies.
Can I, can I, can I speak to that, Michelle?
Yep.
Okay, so policy did meet this week and, um, we approved, uh, at least within our subcommittee, the two time-sensitive policies, which were a mask policy and the pandemic policies. So those are in place and those are poised to present to you at the meeting on the second.
Okay.
Uh, last night I saw the document that you sent from Mary Beth Ting. And there is one point that is now a little bit in conflict with what we approved in policy. So I think it'd be very easy to smooth that out. I'm, I know with the, the urgency to get the plan done, that email might be one that's sitting unread. I could see that. But I've written an email to the group that sort of talks about normalizing those two. So there's not a conflict between our new mask policy and Mary Beth Ting's mask guidance, which there wasn't a lot of overlap. So I think maybe when everyone catches up with their email, that will make more sense.
So we can do that on the second and get that in place. Um.
I think so. Am I, just procedurally, as the chair of the policy subcommittee, can I send that policy to Mary Beth Ting? So she could normalize the two without us having to revote as a subcommittee? I think she can change her document when then we don't have to change ours.
Yeah, you, you would need to bring to us what you voted and then in that meeting we can.
Okay.
To what Mary Beth has, but just email it to her.
Um, okay.
To discuss graduation requirements.
It's part of the pandemic. That was one of the caveats of that pandemic policy, right, Mary Superintendent? Wasn't that one of the, um, many bullet points of the policy?
I believe so, that, that it's asking, it gives the superintendent the charge to look at that, um, in that first formal piece. Um, I'd have to look at the language if I come back to the board, the committee with that language or not, or if we just move, we adjust any kind of regulation requirements that are impacted by COVID.
Yeah, because I feel like community service maybe, like my, like my son's going to get his 15 hours this year, but I don't know that everybody else is, is going to do that. And I also, um, I don't remember if we require the MCAS requirement in our requirements or not, and I, and who the heck knows what that's going to be, so.
So, Michelle, just to be clear, it's how the full committee votes on the mask policy. I should not share it with Nurse Ting?
You should share it with her.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Present to us should be the one you voted on.
Yes, it will be. I mean.
We can take input at that meeting. And then at that meeting, we will probably take whatever the ma- the policy, there's a, there's a policy that says that we can set aside the rule that we have to have two readings if there's a need to, to prove it. So we probably will set aside the normal procedure in order to approve those so that we have them in place before school starts.
Right, and I.
Mary Beth Banios, um, when the student handbooks are changed, those are supposed to be, that presented to us. So I know that that's in the work. So maybe if we can have those by the second also. If not, we'll have to unsatisfyingly approve them after school starts.
Okay, let me see what I can do with that to get them ready for the second.
Yeah, I don't, I, like, I don't know. It'd be, it's hard to write, it, it would be hard to write those without having the policies approved yet, you know what I mean? So maybe it'll have to be unsatisfyingly approved after school starts.
Yeah, and can I ask, Michelle, is, is it been precedent that elementary handbooks are also approved by the?
Well, no, it's, I think it's just high school.
It's just the high school typically, yep. And what we can do is work on the handbook based on the draft policies that we have that the committee has put into place. So we, if you vote in those policies first, I think it would be a sequence question. You vote in the policies and then the handbook language reflects those policies. We may be able to get that done in the same meeting.
Yeah, because I think we need to address, like, Peter used the descriptor harsh punishment for not wearing a mask. I think we, the public and the students need to know, like.
Yeah.
We, we need there to be mask wearing and, and what's going to happen if that isn't possible.
Well, and just for reference, that's the one part of the, the current two documents that say something different. So the policy that we approved refers to the student handbooks. Uh, Superintendent Banios was good about that and provided the exact language he wanted to see. So the policy does not establish the consequences, nor does it establish what type of mask. So it's my opinion that what we did is very overall and prescriptive in the way a policy should be. And then what Nurse Ting is aiming to do and the handbook could do is break it down into a protocol and a procedure, which feels right to me.
So we can, we can get to that. We'll get to that. Okay, Stacy, you have five minutes. You, you were supposed to be gone. Goodbye. We're good, so I feel like we could adjourn. Does anybody feel like there's other issues to cover?
When, when will, I guess the question is, when, when's the committee going to be set, the advisory committee going to be set up and how often will they report their numbers to us?
We'll know that on September 2nd. How does that feel?
That far away.
Well, we may have a pencil in meeting between now and then, so we'll see how the pencil in meeting goes.
What I, what I would share is that we'll actually begin work on that next week and we'll, we'll get the team together, but we'll be prepared to give you a, a more detailed presentation on the second. But we will be, we'll, we will be meeting prior to that.
Thank you.
I think we should say something, a little bit of something about, um, like, don't go out and buy 15 masks because we may have some guidance around what that's going to be. Like, don't get super excited about that until after the second. Like, leave that as like the last minute surprise of what you're going to do because, um, there's some controversy around what's the right kind of.
Yeah, what is, what is the definition of a mask? How many layers does it need to be?
Definition of a, a face covering, right, so.
Right, that's, that's all in development. Nurse Ting has been working on that and, I mean, we're getting there, I think.
Getting there.
We're getting there.
And it's all for the purpose of safety. All right, I think we're going to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn at 4:52. Second.
Anna, second, because I don't think I can.
Second.
Okay, we're going to vote. Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Stacy?
Yes.
Doug Bailey, yes. Thank you, all of you.